Katati City Council and the successor agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, November 28th, 2017. May I please have a roll call? Councilmember Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Delosso?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Landman?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. Move to approve.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Let that show a 5-0 vote. We'll move on to announcements. The City of Katati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Katati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Katati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. Ronert Park Katati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit www.sonoma library.org. The Katati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Katati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com. That is N-I-X-L-E dot com. The City offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at katatiscity.org. Come join in the holiday cheer with upcoming Katati events. The Holiday Tree Lighting will be in La Plaza Park on December 1st from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Holiday Drop and Shop is December 2nd in the Ray Miller Community Center from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Shop and Stroll is December 2nd from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Breakfast with Santa will be December 9th in the Katati Room at 9:00 a.m. and at 10:30 a.m. Contact Recreation Coordinator Ashley Wilson at awilson@katatiscity.org or (665) 4222 for more information. So with that, we-
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Somehow, I think, an announcement got dropped off-
Oh, yeah.
If I could add one, just as a reminder to people that on Saturday, December 23rd, we'll be doing an annual holiday food drive. We've done it for the past four or so years, maybe five, in partnership with the California Homemakers Association, and it'll take place in a couple of the classrooms where we put food boxes together for the needy, usually about 100 to 130 food boxes, and it's not just canned goods and a bag of rice. These are like hard work, frozen turkeys. If you really want to get a workout that day, I can help you. So between 9:00 and 2:00 on Saturday, the 23rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Seeing none, then we will move on to the honorary mayor, David Maza of Technology High School. Good evening, David. How are you this evening?
Good. I had a cold over the-
Oh, that's okay.
But my voice is getting better today, so.
Okay. We have a proclamation for you. From the City Council of the City of Katati, David Maza does hereby receive the title of honorary mayor. This title is conferred for your outstanding contribution to the cause of good government and as an expression of our appreciation for your support for this office. I do therefore confer this title with all the privileges and honors attendant to this distinction. So-
Do I walk up?
We will come down as soon as everyone is done talking to you. I know you had a little bit of homework, so we'll let you go first.
Okay. Should I report my homework back to John?
Sure.
You do it to all of us.
Okay, all right. So I asked around people my age about Katati or any complaints or issues or any, just anything to say about Katati, and for the most part, I've heard Katati's perky, there's not much wrong with it, but one thing that I did hear is that people my age aren't too involved in the community and often bored, and they'd actually like more opportunities to volunteer in the community, and they're just not sure how. That was the only thing I really heard.
Well, that's-
It's a good job.
That's good. We have plenty of volunteer opportunities. I'm sure Ashley could use lots, Ashley back there could use lots more hands with things. So it'd be good if you knew how we could reach out. That would be helpful, so that we could know that folks that would like to volunteer, so that we can put them in touch with Ashley, or you can pass Ashley's information on to them, and she'd be happy either email or telephone will work for her. Since it's a landline, it won't take texts. I know you guys would rather text. Oh, it does take texts? No, it doesn't take texts. Okay, all right. So I'll go this way. Wendy?
Well, thank you for checking in with everybody and being again our most well-dressed honorary mayor ever. I wanted to thank you for, the one thing I was thinking is if there was a teacher or somebody that we could coordinate with as far as finding volunteers, because it'd be great to be able to find current students who are interested, but then down the road it'd be nice to have a contact person that we could get in touch with. So if you could maybe find out who at your school would be willing to coordinate with Ashley about future needs, that would be fantastic, and then just email her the info. We'd really appreciate it.
Perfect teacher, actually.
Oh, good. Excellent. All right. So anyway, that was, I just thought if we could have one point person, it makes it a lot easier, so.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for doing that homework and coming back and telling us about it.
No problem.
All right, take care.
Yeah, again, thank you, David, for doing the homework assignment I assigned to you. You did fine. That was good. I will say that, really, I have very little to say outside of, it's interesting, because I know at the high school level, you know, there's that commitment of doing community service hours every, well, over your four-year period, and that, you know, the opportunities aren't obvious enough at, at least to students at Tech High. So that's on us to work closely with the Tech High teachers and make sure that the word gets out. So guaranteed, that little trigger that you send to us is going to resonate with the city staff and with us up here, so we'll make sure they get the word. Thank you. Appreciate it.
John?
Thank you, David. At your previous meeting last time, you indicated you were part of the Interact Club?
Yeah, two Interact Clubs.
Two Interact Clubs, and they are primarily a volunteer organization to assist nonprofits?
Yes.
So as a member, you would be an ideal vehicle for communication on coordinating of volunteers?
Yeah.
Terrific. That'd be great. Thank you so much for participating, and I hope that your involvement in their introduction to local community government sparks an interest in you down the road, and you can share that with others. Thank you.
I actually like coming here.
That's very nice to hear. Thank you, David. Well, I think you've been given more than enough homework, so I'm going to refrain from quote-unquote giving homework, but I would ask one last favor, and it's just kind of hopscotches and what my colleagues ask for. Obviously, there's a need to find a connection, a regular connection over at Tech High, perhaps at other schools, too, to put together the needs. Obviously, you have volunteers who are looking for volunteer work. We have a system here with Ms. Wilson where we can give them some things to do that hopefully will be beneficial both to them and the city. So if we, if you could help set up some sort of annual process, times, check-in dates, obviously who to contact, as my colleagues said, and also, you know, what sort of information in the school, what does the school need? What are the needs from the people that want to volunteer? What are they interested in doing? Perhaps just as importantly, what are they not interested in doing? And conversely, we can get information from Ms. Wilson on what we have available, when it might be available. Then you would have, I think you would, could proudly look back and say, "You set this up, and it should be ongoing for some years to go after that." So if you can get something like that going, then I think that'd be a nice thing to do. It'd be right up your alley. So lastly, I'll just leave you with this, not only perhaps, as was mentioned, a very well-dressed and attentive honorary mayor, but what I was struck by, our honorary mayor is usually visit for a while, but they don't sit through the meeting. You sat through almost our entire meeting, if I remember correctly. I believe it was the whole-
Almost the whole thing, yeah.
And this was one of the longest meetings we've had in months, perhaps this year. I don't think we're out of here until midnight. So my hat's off to you. That's a good start, and if you're still interested in public service after that, so much the better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for being our honorary mayor, and did you bring someone with you tonight?
No, my mom ended up having to go to Sacramento today.
Okay. All right. Just your photographer, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, with that, we will take a picture with you.
Let's see, I'll do it from here. Yeah, this is good. Just see if you're ready. All right, on the count of three, nice smile, one, two, and three. And again, one, two, and three. Oh, work, thank you. And hands, just do the same thing with the hands, the handshake.
So are we looking to Twitter or Facebook for this to become famous, David? Or both?
Right on.
Snapchat.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Berich?
Thank you, Mayor. What a nice young man. We should all be very, very proud. After about eight months, I thought that this program was over. I had asked a couple times, and I got no response, because we haven't had a honorary mayor for many months, and we blamed summertime, we blamed school, we blamed all kinds of things. And, you know, I think if you really want to reach out to these young people, I don't understand why you don't go to the Tech High schools, you know, ask to speak before these classes, you don't do any one-on-one with those students out there, and you use these teenagers as a conduit, and I think you can do a better job. It's not a big commute. I think this is something you guys can do. I think it was pretty clear that this young man didn't know anything about this silly program before he came here at the last meeting. I don't think it's his fault. I think someone did not prepare him properly for what he was about to go through here. I don't think he learned anything positive from this experience, and I've seen this before. It's been generally my assessment of this program. It's a lot of highfalutin jargon that goes back and forth, not much productivity. You haven't made good on any of the requests of these students for over a decade. I think you've admitted that yourself. I just, I don't think you people really care about these kids. I don't think you ever really will. I think it's pretty clear over the years, you people play the race card, you lie on the record in front of the public, you cover up things, you break the law, you break the Brown Act, you break your own code of conduct, you have council members using profanity here. I think you are absolutely the worst role models imaginable for these young adults. You march these kids up here, and I think it's just a bunch of political theater. It's not sincere what you're trying to do with this program, and this is exactly why many other cities don't have programs like this. We can't find any cities that don't have, that have a program like this. And I've talked to some of them, and they've told me why. It's inappropriate. This is the people's house. This is where business gets done. Oftentimes, politics is ugly, it's frustrating, and it's, sometimes it's not conducive for young people. That's why other cities don't do it. The City Hall is not a place of honor. It's a house of shame. You've proved that. Lori Alderman has proved that to you. You're not honoring these kids with this program. You use these kids and give the appearance that you are so in touch with Katati's youth. I think it's time that you end it, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on the honorary mayor? Seeing none, I will close public comment on that, and we will move on to presentations. Isabel? Come on down. Isabel will give us an update from Sonoma State University. We appreciate you being here with us. No problem.
So Sonoma State has about two more weeks of classes, and then we move on to our finals week, and then we'll all be heading home for winter break. But with the ending of the semester, that means activities are slowing down, and everyone's starting to study and get everything done that they were supposed to do all semester, so. So there's not much going on at the university. We do have pizza with the president, so that is coming up Thursday, which is the administration and then this AS president all get together and give out free pizza and have like an open talk with students that want to come, and that's going to happen Thursday, and that's about it. Great. Thank you.
Well, have a wonderful holiday, and thanks for the report, and I guess we'll see you in the new year.
Yes.
Well, enjoy your time off and enjoy the holidays. Thanks, Isabel. Oh, and good luck on your finals.
Yeah.
Approval of the final agenda? Do we have any changes to the agenda?
So Mayor, I would recommend that we move the regular calendar up to the position of the public hearings, public hearings pack. So all the items under 13 move up to 12, and 12 moves to 13.
Okay. Okay. Is everybody agreeable to that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then with that, we will move on to citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-2, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. With that, I have no cards for citizens' business. Lori?
Tonight, you made a 644-page meeting packet. If you look at the city attorney, that's how big it is. Plus, tomorrow is the Measure G Oversight Committee, and that is 125 pages, all in one week. I repeatedly talked about spacing things out and not keeping us here to midnight like last time. I was, you did absolutely no discussion when it came 10 o'clock. You just approved going on. You need to actually think and do and put things off. There is no, some of these things on the agenda do not have to be done right then. I also wanted to talk to you about some of your staff's behavior. Vicky Parker, last council meeting, swore at Eric Kirchman, right in the council chambers. Nothing was done. Damian Obit, for the last eight months, has been sending me an email reply that is respectful, and he continues to do it, every email that I send, and this is all behavior that's way beneath their positions, and especially with how much both of them earn. It's really wrong. I don't like all these things on the agenda, too, that there's no way that we can go through and do everything that we need to do. I mean, I did as much as I could as reading it, but I'm in finals, you know, at school, at paralegal program, and putting it over Thanksgiving where nobody would probably get to it was ridiculous, you know? Why this meeting do you have to have 644 pages to go through? And please keep, and when you think at 10 o'clock to continue on tonight, remember me, because I end up in pain the next day from your decisions, because my disabilities cannot stand more than three hours. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? George?
For the benefit of the audience, I'm former City Councilman George Berich. I think it's fair to say that the council doesn't always appreciate my comments or my presence here, but I think you all should have thought about that long and hard before you spent thousands of dollars to run me off my council seat and for doing a job well and respectable. Now, at the last meeting regarding the electronic vehicle charging stations outside the City Hall here, why was the council silent each time I asked whether or not the City Hall was charging the customers of those electrical vehicle stations? Then John Moore comes forward a few weeks ago and says, "I am wrong," that in fact that the city was charging the public for the use of those charging stations? Well, Mr. Moore was either terribly wrong or he lied, and you all sat there and said nothing. Staff sat there and said nothing. Nobody corrected Mr. Moore. Now, our city manager also lied. Our council meetings are not viewable on Comcast Cable 26, as he claims. They are not. This is the second time I've brought it up. City manager's been silent about it. Now, Vicky Parker in the planning department, sitting in the back of the room at the last meeting, needs to be reprimanded for openly calling Eric Kirchman, a citizen in good standing, a jackass. Chief Parish was sitting right behind. He saw and heard the whole thing. Did Chief Parish take Vicky Parker outside and tell her that if she did that again, he would arrest her? No, he did not. Now, how do you spell corruption? C-O-T-A-T-I. Now, what are you going to do about the homeless problem in this town? We're coming up on December, boys and girls. You haven't spent a dime on the homeless? Keep kicking that can down the road? You keep, you people give liberals a bad name. You really do. I'm ashamed of you. Last council meeting, I agreed with John Moore on a particular issue. You all laughed. You laughed at me. Why? Even socialists can get something right once in a while. I can reach across the aisle and agree with someone like Mr. Moore when he's right. My time up, ma'am? Is it, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' business? Yes, Eric?
I apologize, I'll be a little bit emotional tonight, because the last meeting was kind of disturbing to me. I'll try to start by being somewhat positive. This evening, I drove home, the way Mr. Delosso has had the chance to drive home a number of times. It was a delightful drive. Sun was setting, it was very pretty out. That aside, I was concerned at the last meeting that staff stated that they are more than capable, willing, and desiring to take care of all calls from Sonoma State, students, staff, et cetera, after hours. One would assume they'd do the same thing for people here in Katati. Oh, it's strange, because the person that made this statement also made statements the same week, 180 degrees from what he stated publicly. That's a concern. We're a country built on ideas of freedom, Bill of Rights, things where everyone is supposed to be equal. We don't have multi-tiers of enforcement, of care, of concern for people. So it's kind of troubling when people do certain things in certain ways. You have a system of protocols for the public that apparently doesn't in any way impact your staff. Staff can curse, tell jokes, doodle, have their cellphones on, do handheld material, and do a number of other things. The last meeting, I suggested that their time could be better utilized working in their office or doing work, as many other staffs do when city councils have meetings. But at these meetings, they should be behaving professionally. They should be working towards the public, having the public's business done in public with the five of you leading and directing staff. It's very rare that you direct staff to do much of anything. It concerns me that at times, there are people here that sit and play with their gear. To be specific, they sit in that back chair in the far corner and put their hand on a pistol. Putting your hand on a pistol essentially is inappropriate. I was brought up that you never reach for a gun unless you plan to use it. Los Angeles police are trained that they never draw their gun unless someone's life is in danger, theirs or a citizen's. So when someone's playing with the gun handle, it's really inappropriate and really intimidating and really wrong. So every now and again, we should try to be professional, even here in Katati. Thank you. I'll let go of the 16 seconds you will have.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on citizens' business this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on the consent calendar items? Seeing none, I will close public comment on that then, and we will move on to the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve items A, B, and C on the consent calendar.
At second? I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Let that show a 5-0 vote. We will move on to direction on future agenda items.
I think we have enough agenda items tonight, actually.
Yes, we do.
I'm good tonight. Nothing to ask, what do you think?
Okay. John?
No, I think it might be appropriate to see if we're going to get an update from County of Sonoma on the outreach and maybe the redirection on some of the parking issues?
Some of the, I mean, the post-fire recovery issues?
Well, and if they're going to initiate anything regarding the safe parking program for those, in addition to maybe the fire, but others as well.
Okay.
Wendy?
No, none this week. Thank you.
John? No? Okay. So with that, we are going to reverse this order here. Let's see if I can get this right. Put this over, and we will move to item, which is now 12A, authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement for a Reverb Hotel by Hard Rock Hotels.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So before I start, I'll just say that the potential owner, builder for this proposed project is with us tonight, Ken Molinaro, is in the back, in the back row there, is available for questions, if you guys have any questions, as we finish the staff report. So just a little bit of history. The City of Katati, this is three years ago now, approached Caltrans and acquired the two-acre park-and-ride lot, that's 147 St. Joseph's Way, and it was, the city approached Caltrans, and Caltrans released it for the sole purpose of redeveloping it to anchor the northern gateway of the downtown specific plan area. And the city identified this location, has long identified this location as an ideal lodging site due to its proximity to 101 and 116. And then in July of this year, the city put out an RFP to request proposals for lodging development, and we received eight letters of interest on the property and other informal inquiries, and two formal proposals. One was a holiday- was, the city approached Caltrans and Caltrans released it for the sole purpose of redeveloping it to anchor the northern gateway of the downtown specific plan area. And the city identified this location, has long identified this location as an ideal lodging site due to its proximity to 101 and 116. And then in July of this year, the city put out an RFP to request proposals for lodging development. And we received eight letters of interest on the property and other informal inquiries and two formal proposals. One was a Holiday Inn proposal and one is a Reverb proposal, which is a Reverb-branded hotel proposal, which is what we're talking about tonight. After review of both of the proposals, it's recommended that the city council authorize the city manager to execute a development agreement with the developer for the Reverb-branded hotel. And it's based on many factors, some of the main ones being that the builder-owner has a long lodging development history and he's a part of a local family with long business ties in Sonoma County. So, deep roots in Sonoma County. There's a clear and positive funding plan for the entitlement process as well as operations and substantial interest and support from potential lenders for project construction. And the development proposal that's before you also includes a good faith deposit of $200,000, which is received over a two-step due diligence period as outlined in the agreement. And the Reverb concept is a musically themed hotel that appears to be a very good fit with Catati's musical history and heritage. And would provide a new lodging option that's markedly different from any other lodging product in Sonoma County. So it's, I think, good in that respect as well. The development agreement is clean in terms of, it's a straightforward transaction, which is a good thing, I think, for both parties. The hotel would have a room count of approximately 150 rooms, which, from a city perspective, would also provide a long-term transit occupancy tax, but then also provide visitors to Catati, guests to Catati that can frequent Catati businesses and help bring new people in for our local businesses here. And it'll also have immediate visual, a positive visual impact at the entrance to Catati and anchor the northern gateway to hopefully help with future infill development on the properties that are immediately south from it, the undeveloped and underdeveloped properties that are there and are owned by people that have interest in development. So it'd be a good way to kick off that whole corridor. And then with development of this property, the city, and this is in accordance with the functional, termed a functional exchange agreement with Caltrans, the city is responsible for developing off-site parking lots to replace the spots that are lost in the redevelopment of this area. And they're placed in places that Caltrans wanted them to be. So they're two different places in the county, but the city's obligation is to design and then construct those parking lots for Caltrans. And if we move, if council moves forward with the development agreement tonight, then we'd be coming back to council in the near future with a request for a design agreement to move that process forward. So it would go, it would track in parallel with the entitlement process for the proposed hotel. And the sale of the hotel, that is the intended funding source, both for the design, so to reimburse for the design costs, but also fund the construction of the off-site park-and-ride lots. And all the deposits, the good faith deposits and also the sale proceeds go into an escrow account that is accessible by the city and by Caltrans. And that's, basically, that's the repository, and that's how it's used through an escrow, third-party escrow agent, to fund these off-site developments. And I will also just point out that tourism in general in Sonoma County is a huge industry, and Sonoma County has the distinction of being the only community in Sonoma County that doesn't really partake in that at all. And this would be a good way to kind of, you know, get involved in the, get involved in the larger tourism industry in Sonoma County, both for the benefit of the city but also for the benefit of our local businesses and in the benefit of our residents by revitalizing that downtown area and providing more services. And from a city perspective, it also will provide additional, additional local funding, which is, as you well know, and it's been a long priority of the council, to provide more, a wider base of revenue for more stability, more general fund stability moving forward into the future. So that is it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I'd just say that it's a, it's a very, at least personally speaking, it's a very exciting potential development. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And like I said earlier, Ken Molinaro, the owner-builder is also here and can answer questions as well. Thanks.
Questions? Not yet? Do you have a question? Okay.
Wanted to ask Mr. Molinaro if I might, a few questions. Well, welcome. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. I feel a little kind of awkward with my back to everybody.
Yeah, it's bad enough to be up in front of everybody and have to talk, but then when you have your back to everybody and feel their eyes, that's rough. I hear you. What I wanted to ask you, just a few simple, easy questions. I've had a chance to look through your background, had a chance to do some research, the bona fides from the banking industry, very impressive. I wonder if you could just talk a little bit, though, for our benefit and the public who'll be watching this and over the internet, about your history in Sonoma County, some of the interests, background, your background here, because you've been here your whole life, pretty much, on and off.
Since I was born.
Yeah, yeah. That goes back a pretty long ways. And I thought that was interesting. And I wanted to hear you talk a little more about how you see this making a fit in Catati, because I think that's an interest of this town and making sure it's something that fits this individual community. As a longtime resident of Sonoma County, I have a sense you might be able to share where you see that going.
Well, a little bit about my background. My folks moved to Santa Rosa in 1958. They were one of the first owners in Larkfield area, north of Santa Rosa. It's where I grew up. I went to St. Rose. I went to Cardinal Newman High School. I went to Sonoma State. My dad was a highway patrolman for many years, and he was also in the vegetable business. He owned a produce stand out on River Road that lots and lots of people went to. I, when I got out of high school, I was working for him and going to Sonoma State. He got sick and had to sell that business, and I was at sort of loose ends. So I got into the real estate business, was lucky enough to be taken under the wing of a fairly prominent local real estate developer. This is in the 80s. They taught me the business. We built quite a few houses in Santa Rosa in the 80s. In 94, I think 93 or 94, I relocated to Mexico. I spent the next 20 some odd years in Mexico, developed and built and operated a number of hotels and resorts, Puerto Vallarta and Los Cabos in Mazatlan. And then five years ago, my wife, who I met and married in Mexico, and I came back to Santa Rosa. My mother had gotten sick. She still lived in Larkfield at the time. She got sick, so we came back up so I could spend her last couple of years with her, which we did. She passed away almost three years ago now. It's been great being back in Sonoma County and back in Santa Rosa because although I know it annoys my wife occasionally when we were in Mexico, people would say, "Where was your home?" And I always said, "Sonoma County and Santa Rosa," because it's, this is my roots and this is where I'm from. I'm, have an interest in a winery up in Alexander Valley. My sister and brother-in-law live in Glen Ellen. My other sister lives in Novato. Her brother lives in Woodland. My brother-in-law is Bruce Cone, who just recently sold Biarcone Winery. So, you know, my family's in the wine business. We produce olive oil. I grew up with a lot of the winery owners in high school. Rather than stealing scotch, we were stealing wine from the Pardo Chis wine cellar to drink. So, I mean, I guess it's just always saying I have very, very strong local roots here. The hotel that we're proposing, I think it's, I think it's important to point out that in the hotel business, there's really three layers involved. There's the developer-owner of the actual asset, the hotel itself, which in this case will be my family. I'm building this hotel for one of our family trusts. This is a project that we intend on keeping as an asset long-term because it's here in our hometown and give me a place to hang out. So we're the, we will be the asset owner. On top of that is the franchise company, you know, Hilton, Hyatt, Marriott, in this case, Hard Rock Hotels. They, you know, they license the name Reverb to us. They hold us to brand standards. They do our reservations for us. They provide us with a lot of things, but they have no ownership interest in the property whatsoever. In fact, it's specifically forbidden under federal franchise laws. And the third part of it is the management company. That most times in hotels, you have a third-party management company, professional management company that runs the hotel. They also specifically, in almost every case, have no ownership interest in it. In this particular case, because of my background, I'll probably self-manage the property since I'm right here. I don't really need an outside management company because, because of my experience. But the other thing I think it's important to point out is that this is really a, this is a labor of love for me. I mean, I'm back in Sonoma County after many years away. I'm building something. I have to confess, as I left California, as I was crossing the border to go to Mexico 25 years ago, I said two things to myself. One, I'm never moving back to California. And two, even if I do, I'm never building anything in California again. And here I am. But it is really a labor of love. I mean, we're very excited about this project. It's important to me that it, that it fits within the community. It fits within the ethos of Sonoma County and the lifestyle that we all have here. We're going to be very, very, very interested in how the design is, what the exteriors look like, what the connection is with the community. And Reverb by Hard Rock, Hard Rock is a, is a large, large company owned by the Seminole Indian Tribe in Florida. They started out in the casino business. They make 100 zillion dollars a year in casinos. They branched out into, into the hotel business over the past five or six years. And they, they came up with the Reverb idea as a, as a secondary label, if you will, to, to the Hard Rock. Hard Rock Hotels, when you think of Hard Rock, and that's why it needs an explanation. You think Hard Rock Hotels, you think crazy millennials partying all night in casinos. Hard Rock Hotels normally have 400 to 800 rooms. Lot of them have casinos attached and, and their reputation is basically deserved. I mean, they're, they're party hotels. Reverb is designed to be entirely different from that. Reverb is designed to be in suburban areas such as we're in. I mean, you could never build a Hard Rock hotel here because there's just not enough, you could never build 500 or 600 rooms. Reverb is designed to be, designed for people our age to go stay out, you know, that we're not, we're not designing it for people to come and stay up all night. It's designed for, for business and for tourism, but in a, you know, we'll have a lobby bar. We'll have some grab-and-go food, some meeting space, you know, a gym, a nice outdoor space, but a, but a kinder, gentler Hard Rock, I guess. And as many times as I get the opportunity, I'll just keep harping away on that, that we're not building a Hard Rock. We're building a Reverb, and they're, and they're quite different.
Yeah. I think that's valuable to hear, and that's what I wanted you to expand on because we have the sense, clearly they're different things, but obviously when the public first hears this, like us, they're going to be scratching their heads.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm going to make this quick because I had a couple more questions, and I don't want to take too much of your time or my colleagues' times. So you're looking potentially at the Ryan property in the Frontage area, too, for a food/wine venue, perhaps? What are you thinking? What can you share, if anything, tonight? How upscale that might be, how that might fit in compared to what we have in other areas?
The answer is, I don't know. We're really early in that process. And I'm just trying to get a feel for what would be appropriate there. I mean, we've, we've talked a little bit about possibly some kind of a music venue. I don't, we're kind of shying away from that. There's plenty of music in Catati as it is. I think if we do a restaurant, it would be like Mark Stark's restaurants, perhaps, like a Willie's Wine Bar, a Tapas Place, something that's casual but with an emphasis on quality food, reasonably priced, you know, obviously featuring local produce, local wines. But that's really, really in the works. We really...
And one quick last question then here, and this is going to be based on you, because you have a long experience in developing both in Mexico but certainly here as well. And you've seen a lot how this works. One concern people will always have in an area where you have some area in the downtown that can be developed or, and redeveloped, significant amount of space there. And obviously, the first business that goes in is kind of the keystone that sets what other things follow. What sorts of developments in your experience that would be appropriate for Catati could follow in the rest of the northern gateway with the project you're proposing? What would you see coming in? Would you be interested in seeing come in or partnering with? What are the sort of possibilities you see?
You know, I think that on the, on the pieces directly to the south of your piece, I mean, there's, there's been talk about some kind of retail/housing combination. I've always been a, been a big proponent of the Windsor Town Green. I think that's, it's certainly had its problems, but I think that the theory behind that work-live, some general retail, some housing, I think is a, is a, really a great concept. I'm not a, I'm not a residential developer, so that's just kind of my own personal opinion. You know, I think some kind of retail, I think, would go in there. But I think whatever it is, I think it needs to be very, very site-specific and very specific to, to the town of Catati. Because, you know, I realize that our project is going to be the first thing you're going to see when you make that, that turn. And really, as you're turning, going up Old Road Highway into downtown Catati, I mean, what's there is, is, will, will set the tone for Catati before anybody ever actually gets down to the end of the beginning.
Yeah. I think that's a key point. I agree we'll set the tone, and I agree what you build will set the tone for what might follow. So that's why I asked that. So I think I've taken enough time. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I'd just say that, you don't have to believe me because I'm a real estate developer, but my goal is really, really to work with the town. I mean, we really want to produce a great, a great project that will be, that will be a compliment to everybody. So whatever, whatever we can do, we'll be more than willing to do so.
Good to hear.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have a question from Mr. Molinaro right here?
I had, I had an extremely short question, and I think I probably have already answered it in my head. But on page 46 of the packet, you had said about the adaptive meeting space. You said approximately 3,000, and then of adaptive. Is it square feet?
Yeah.
Okay. That was my guess, but I just wanted to make sure that I was, I'm like, 3,000 rooms? Okay. All right. Great.
Oh, yeah. I forgot to tell you about the 3,000 rooms that we...
Yeah. Oh, awesome. Okay. Thank you very much.
John, did you have any questions?
I have a small one. So you talked a little bit about, you know, you're wanting to design and your design. How much say, or do they have any say at all, does the, the Hard Rock? Do they tell you what they require from a building? Some of the concern that I've heard from some folks is Hard Rock is a corporation. They're going to put a corporate building there. So I kind of would like to understand how much say they have or not.
It's, I mean, I would liken it to McDonald's. You know, McDonald's is owned privately, and McDonald's Corporation can highly suggest to a McDonald's owner that they use a certain type of hamburger bun, but because... But because of the franchise laws in the United States, they can't actually make them. And it's the same thing here. In terms of the interiors of the rooms, yes, they'll have a lot to say about that because that's really what drives the brand. In terms of the level of quality that we provide, yes, they'll have a lot to say about that because that also drives the brand overall. In terms of the exteriors and the layout of the building, I spent about three hours this morning on the phone with Hard Rock's design team in Orlando going over this very thing. And there, you know, we sent them some, just some random ideas that we had based on some pictures that I had taken a couple of weekends ago, driving around. And at first, they were like, well, we don't know because that's, you know, we don't know if that's what Reverb is all about. And I said, yeah, well, okay, but that's what we're going to do. And so then we tussled about it for about an hour. And in the end, I got an email from them just as I was leaving my office saying, you know, I think you've got some really great ideas. Let's see how we can adapt to it. So this isn't, this is not a corporation doing this. This is me. And so, sorry, I'm long-winded, but the answer is, no, we'll build it the way that I think it ought to be built.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. You may have to come back at a later time, but for right now, we'll let you sit down.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So with that...
Do you have questions for staff?
Oh, okay, well, there you go.
Just a couple of quick questions that I couldn't seem to pull out of all the information. Do the two park-and-ride lots have to either begin in good faith or be completed before any work, whatever the work may be, would transpire over in this parcel?
No, so it's, the way the agreement's written is once the, once construction starts on the park-and-ride lot, there's a year timeframe to get the off-site lots operational.
Operational?
Operational.
Wouldn't that be more on, well, wouldn't that be more on Caltrans to get them operational?
Well, operational in the sense that we've built them.
And we're done and we step away?
Yeah.
Really, it's really not too difficult to build a parking lot, right? It's not. That was a rhetorical question.
It's, you're correct. It's not difficult to build a parking lot.
Yeah, okay, that's good. The other question I had was for both design and build, the city bears that cost, correct? And I know there's...
Yeah, that's correct. That's the, I mean, so Caltrans conveyed the property to the city for no cost with the understanding that we would be selling it and then using those proceeds to design and build the off-site lots.
So, but in essence, the design-build cost is on us?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. That's all I had for right now.
Okay. All right, with that, I will open up public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this? I know you have a card. I wanted to see how many people, kind of George, Laurie, okay. So with that, well, George, you want to go first?
Thank you, Mayor.
Lead us off.
From the staff report, I understand that an RFP went out, request for proposals. I don't understand why the public is hearing this for the first time. You've all had council member reports and the city managers' reports over many months and we haven't heard anything about an RFP going out to specific hotels. So I'm kind of shocked to see this on the agenda tonight. I don't understand if we are going to sell and develop that property, why there was never a for-sale sign on that property so that the Sonoma County business community could take a look at it and come up with a variety of different ideas to develop that property for the council to review. I'm under the understanding, as I have for a long time, that Catanas is in real need of sales tax dollars. Real need of sales tax dollars, not TOT taxes, sales tax dollars. And the challenge has been, if you look at the downtown specific plan, is how do we bring in the most amount of sales tax and keep the town still small and charming? Allah, Pat Gilardi, Janet Orchard, Bob Coleman, John Gardino, and others. How do we bring in the most amount of sales tax? You think this is it? I think you need to review this. And regarding tourism, if we remember what Diane Thompson and the council had said about tourism, is that we wanted the type of tourism to come to Catanas, spend your money, have a good time, and get back on the freeway. That was the kind of tourism we were talking about for years, okay? So that we would keep our small-town charm, but we wanted that business. We wanted that tourism dollar. We wanted to be a destination spot for when tourists came up to the wine country. They'd stop in Catanas, maybe purchase some things, enjoy a meal, and get back on the freeway and go up and visit the wine country. This is completely different. I would advise the developers here, before they go further with this project, to contact a man in Sonoma County you probably know, Orin Thiessen, and ask him what you're in store for. I would also ask you to call Mr. Tom Scott of Oliver's Market so he can tell you what you're in store for. I would also ask you to contact Tom Monahan of Monahan Pacific and Victor Gonzalez and ask them what you think you're in store for coming to Catanas to do business.
Thank you for your comments. Laurie, did you have comments?
Generally, I'm in favor of a hotel in Catanas. It is the location. I don't even know if the developer knows, but that is a right-hand turn lane off the freeway, right-turn-hand lonely into St. Joseph Way. And Damian and I, about four years ago, I was almost hit there in that crosswalk. And so Damian and I worked with the transit agencies and they moved it over, the bus stop back over to where Backdoor Records was, is, was, because of safety reasons. Now you want to put a hotel right at St. Joseph Way. Six weeks ago, I told Damian that I saw a procession, a funeral procession from St. Joseph Church go in, try to turn left, and almost two accidents happened to that funeral procession. So it's the place. None of you have mentioned either, even in your staff report, you're getting $2.3 million for this property. Some of it's going back out, but why wasn't that? There are plenty of places to put, well, not plenty, but I'm sure other places in Catanas would sell their land for $2.3 million, raise them to put the hotel in. Why the city has to be involved in this hotel deal is beyond me. You have to keep 30, 30, it's only two, it's four, three to four stories in two acres. We're not talking a lot of things. There's a, I don't know about it, but there's a thing about the sewer. We need a sewer line. It says it's a city's project to be done by next summer. Are we paying for that? There, you've not considered a lot of issues. And this is not a total local program. I mean, he's doing it, but the investors, the funders are, some are in the UK, some are, it says that it's, he's not disclosing all the funders. So we don't, it may not be all local money going. And, oh, and there's no sound wall next to the highway there. The sound wall and the Hard Rock Cafe would look really good together, but there's none right there. The homeless wouldn't even sleep there because it's so noisy with no sound wall next to the highway. So I really hope you can work out something not at that site, but I hope the hotel can be put elsewhere.
Thank you for your comments.
First of all, in terms of tourism, conceivably, you could fill a vacant building that you have on East Catanas Avenue. You could put in a visitor center. You could move the Chamber of Commerce there. You could have an information center. You could potentially use it for business. It sits empty because you have some futuristic plan that the Smart Train is going to have some offices there. There's already space for concessions. There's already space for bathrooms. There's a building right there that could be used for visitor center, information center, and otherwise to draw people in. But it's just a vacant building, though I think it's the prettiest building along the Smart Train section. It sits vacant. Cloverdale's also sits vacant, useless. In terms of other tourism, I have some concerns. I don't know Mr. Molinaro and I apologize if I mispronounce his name, but everything he said in his three-step program reminded me of the Park Brothers. The Park family owns Edgewood. They own the property under what was Caesar's Palace and is now Mont Blue. They own the property under the Horizon Sahara, now the Hard Rock. It's the closest Hard Rock to this area. I know nothing about Reverb and to say you have a franchise trademark entity that doesn't have anything other than their name, I hear Hard Rock. I don't hear Reverb. I don't know anything about Reverb. Hard Rock in Tahoe no longer is controlled or in any way involved with the developer-owner, the Park family. They sold to Paragon and they have been sued a number of times and don't want to have anything to do with this property. It's less than two years since they opened and they're looking more than likely at bankruptcy and they have yet to do a whole lot to utilize the property. The property adjacent to it was owned by Wells Fargo and was occupied for 20 years. It's now vacant and looks a great deal like your station at the Smart Train. So what is promised is great, but unfortunately, even Mr. Molinaro's three-step program only has two steps. He's the owner-operator and he's the developer. So hopefully, he won't do what happened to the Park family that owns thousands of acres and is probably the wealthiest people in northern Nevada. Hard Rock, unfortunately, a month ago, right before the fires here, a fellow was shot and recently they found the potential perpetrator. But that's what can go on at a franchise hotel. And generally speaking, Catanas doesn't like chain stores. I can't get through everything here, but I would think that somebody likes restaurants would want to rebuild the Cricklewood, maybe redevelop Larkfield where Man Gotta Start, maybe go out to River Road. There are a lot of potentials for hotels. I have trouble with this particular site because there are other sites that are perhaps much better. For some reason, it's a sweet deal because the city that couldn't handle the traffic flow of Oliver says, come on down, we have the answers now.
Thank you for your comments. Greg, would you like to speak?
Greg Carricker, Board President, Rancho Adobe Fire. I'm not speaking as a private citizen tonight, but I'm representing the district and I need to bring up some issues. I had a long meeting with Chief Thompson yesterday and during the course of that meeting, I mentioned this development to him and he knew nothing about it. I wrote emails to the battalion chiefs and the administrative manager and they knew nothing about it either. I had just received a text message from Battalion Chief Andy Taylor about 15 minutes ago saying that he has not been contacted about this issue. And he says, that's pretty much business as usual because typically, he's not contacted until the developer is willing to share plans. Unfortunately, because this is a multi-story building served by a fire district that is not prepared to serve a multi-story building, this is not business as usual. In a conversation I had with Chief Thompson today, he asked me to share the following and this is pretty much a verbatim quote. A multi-story building creates multiple issues for the fire district. Typically, we would want outside access from a ladder fire truck. I can tell the council that we just completed our five-year plan, which shows considerable financial challenges and I can definitely reinforce that we have zero plans to buy a ladder truck during this next five-year period. So as much as I personally am in favor of development, I believe the developer and the city council need to be aware of this particular issue. The chief has put out an interesting proposal that if either the developer or the city wished to buy a ladder truck for the fire district, pay for the cost of training and staffing, our door is open and we're willing to negotiate. But that's all current. I'd like to look back and say in the past, communication between the city and the fire district has been very poor. Typically, we're the last to learn of city plans that have a significant impact on public safety. That was then. We have a new chief, Leonard Thompson. He's a very good man. We have a new city manager. So I would like to propose an open-door policy where we have some communication between the two so that we don't go down the road like this and wind up at loggerheads when it's too late to realize all the issues are on the table. So the door of the board is open, the chief's door is open. We would like some dialogue in the future and being communicated to. And I will leave my contact information and the chief's contact information with Mr. Molinaro. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if, and I want to ask, Cynthia Cunningham, did you want to speak? Did you not? And is it this item? Because you said item 13C, which is...
I read it wrong.
Okay, that's why I'm checking, so.
Thank you.
I thought maybe based upon your notes below that this might be it.
Yes, it is, thank you. I hadn't planned on speaking, but as we're talking, I feel compelled just to mention the point that this is news to us in the community. I'm a local Realtor. I've been a member at St. Joseph's Parish for over 20 years and I've invested a lot of time and so volunteer in the community. As a Realtor, oftentimes, people want to buy in Petaluma and I always sell in Catanas because I love Catanas. And my biggest concern, although there's many concerns, is that this is such a surprise to us. You know, I got an email from Father Roll this morning letting us know that this plan was in development. I contacted some of the other Realtors who are kind of more networked in the local NORBAR meetings and they didn't know about it either. And now I'm hearing that the fire department didn't know about it. That I think the impact on the city, on the culture of the city, is significant enough that the period of public information about it should really be transparent. And it doesn't seem transparent to those of us that are just finding out about it, sort of as a last-minute crisis today. So I would really like to just ask for time for the public to have more of a place in the process.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back. I'm sure you'll address this, Damian, but basically, this is the pre-begging. This is not plans. This is not us approving really anything. This is approving, if we move forward, a discussion, a development agreement. And that's all it is. Until an agreement is put in place, any discussions for any project can't move forward. Am I wrong with that?
Yeah, that, right. This, there's going to be many public meetings ahead of us. This is just the start of the discussion. And this isn't even a concept proposal at this point other than, you know, proposal basically to enter into a development agreement to begin the discussion, so.
And this particular site, this site has been being looked at for about five or six years at least. Again, until there's an agreement and until there's a project and until there's something to move forward, that's when all the public input happens. We don't have anything really to look at. This is really to allow the two of you... This is really to allow the two of you to...
Yeah, I mean, what's...
Move forward.
Yeah, it just allows us to move forward. And so what the start is, is they, is, you know, we'll have to get a set of, you know, proposed development plans, and then, once the development application's complete, we go to design review, and then we go to planning commission, and depending on what's involved in the entitlement process, it could be a city council step, but then back to final design review. So all that still has to be, I mean, there's still, there's still all that process ahead of us. So this just allows us to start that process, as you said. And you're right, this site has been talked about for a minimum of, well, I mean, it's been a minimum of three years in multiple and numerous, I should say numerous, public meetings. And even before that, before we actually formally acquired the Caltrans property, we were talking about it. So this is, it is nothing new. And when this was put up, you know, when we were talking about the proposal, it was on the city website, and it was on the commercial real estate websites. It's still on them, it actually just was on there until just recently. So it was well-known in the commercial real estate business that this property was being listed during the RFP process, so. You know, the intent of the process right now isn't to, you know, wasn't to do a development application review. It was to get the property under a development agreement so that we can move forward in that development review process. And some of the issues that were brought up are CEQA issues, and that all gets reviewed during the development process, whether it's traffic, or noise, or sewer, or whatever else. That's just a normal part of the development process where that's reviewed and mitigated if there's any mitigations necessary.
Did you perhaps, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm going to jump on something you started there, too. Yeah, that was my thought tonight. I think it's an important thing for everybody in the community to know because if you're not following this and watching our meetings closely every single night, this might come as a surprise. Oh, people are looking potentially and doing some economic development, building a hotel in downtown Catati. It's a surprise. But this isn't so much an agreement to do that, this is the beginning of a discussion. As I look at the timeline, and this admittedly long packet, what was over 600 pages and so on, if everybody didn't see everything in it, I'm certainly going to forgive you. I did my best, but I could have missed something, too. But one thing I did see, we're looking at a timeline to begin the process of going through: design review, a public meeting, then to the planning commission, another public meeting, then finally back to us, I think next summer, August of 2018? So, and that's assuming it all just goes in one, one, two, three like that. Sometimes, as the city manager said, it loops back, sometimes there's multiple meetings. So I think there'll be a lot of discussion, and people should, will, and should be consulted at the appropriate time. Which leads me to one last question for staff. Given that this isn't really even so much as a design review or proposal, this is a general concept discussion, are we out of step in terms of notifications to Rancho Adobe Fire in any way? I would think, looking at this, understanding it as I do, having read the packet, that we're not quite at that point yet where we would do that, and I know historically, of course, we do.
Yeah, we don't have a, we don't have a proposal yet, so, no, it's not unusual. And I will say, too, that the working relationship with staff is great. We're always communicating, so.
I would agree, I think historically, that's an important thing, and I can see perhaps you've made that mistake. But as I told Roachard Board, as a matter of fact, when you were on the board last year, I agree, we need better communication, and I think we need to have communication where we're less likely to be automatically adversarial. I would love to see that go away. Instead of taking advantage, actually work together for the benefit of Catati, because we all win with that. We'll assuredly all lose in upcoming ventures if we don't do that. So I think we all recognize that. So I think that's all I had for now, other than for the public. This is going to be plenty of time for you to think about this. And one thing I was happy to hear tonight, I wanted to hear from Mr. Molinaro, and I got the sense he's willing to be here and he's willing to listen to you, too, which I think is very important. I think with something like that, you can have the sense you'll probably get something, if we're lucky, if everything works out, that works for this community. Because that isn't always the case with the development sometimes. But so far, I'm gratified, I think we have a good start.
Did you say you have questions?
I ask my questions.
Oh, I thought you were...
But I had my head up for comments.
Okay.
Either way.
All right.
Well, I think it's pretty clear, we've heard some really significant points, and I'd like to just briefly summarize that, and I know all of these impacts will be looked at, but vehicle circulation is certainly an important one, along with any other traffic measures. I just think as a high arching goal, communication in general. There have been some projects in the city's past that have failed, and I've always felt that they failed because of lack of communication, and communication in advance of something. So again, we're hearing that, so I think that's pretty clear. We may even, you know, not to make extra workloads, but we may think of before, design review, planning, city council, that maybe there's a half-day workshop, too, and get ideas from residents of what they'd like to see in that general area. The, you know, I know some people have said, because I've heard this over the last few days, about, you know, do you really need to put a hotel, and do you really need to put it there? And I think, yes, we do need to put a hotel in, because whether it's sales tax or transient occupancy tax, it's revenue. That's the key. The key word is revenue, regardless of how it comes into the city. So I think whether it's, you know, one or the other, that doesn't really matter to me in that sense. But I think there's a good nexus with the musical theme. You know, we've got the Green Music Center down the road, we've got several events in town that are musically oriented, and this, I think it's a quiet spot that might be a preferred. I know it's right next to the freeway, I know how that goes, but I've been in many hotels next to freeways, and maybe it's just me, but 20 minutes into laying down in bed, I don't hear anything, so it doesn't matter. So I think that's, that's an issue that'll get worked out. For Mr. Molinaro, you will get input from Catati residents, I have no doubt about that. It'll all be good. And I think the key to a project like this is that the design clearly needs to fit with this community. And again, I think going through the whole process and getting the public input, I think, you know, it would help guide us. I mean, I'm positive that we're finally, I will tell you, the first time I was elected to council, and I can't even remember when it was, but it was like some 20-something years ago, "We need a hotel in Catati, we need a hotel in Catati." And there were some strange locations where the guy sells the flowers not to reason why, that little odd-shaped, I don't even know if it's a block, but that little odd-shaped, you know, surrounded by con... That was a place that people thought would be a great place for a hotel, which I think would be an absolutely horrible place for a hotel. And could there be better spots in the city? There could be. I don't know that there's a lot of properties out there that are, in my opinion, kind of shovel-ready like this one. So that's what I have at this point. Thanks.
Wendy?
I'll just reiterate, too, just going out and speaking with people, everybody said, "Why don't we have a place for people to stay when they drop off their kids at Sonoma State, and they want to stick around and check out the area?" So I, and one thing that people have also said is they don't want it to be gigantic. They want a smaller scale, they want something that fits with the community. So I'm very hopeful that this, beginning of this conversation is looking like it's going to be a positive match. And like we said along the way, there will be a lot of input, and we've got a lot of strong opinions here, and that's a wonderful thing, that we have that kind of level of interest in our community. So I'm really glad to see that, and I'm glad to hear that there's some flexibility and some interest in maintaining the integrity of the town. So I think it's a good beginning of the conversation, so, thank you.
I have one more question before I make comments, and that's probably to our city attorney. Normally, this is the proper time, point in time when we bring contracts. We don't talk about contracts before there's actually a contract in place. So it would have been inappropriate for us to speak specifically about this with the fire department, or with the real estate agents, or anything like that, this specific contract prior to it being talked about in public and decided upon, correct?
Yes, you're correct that we don't normally talk about a contract that's under negotiation and begin giving out public notices. You know, we fairly recently reached an agreement on the terms of the proposed contract before you, and that starts the process of the public noticing and the public discussion.
Okay, because typically, what you don't want to have happen is you're in the middle of negotiations, and you start getting, you know, all kinds of stuff going on, and then all of that falls apart.
Correct.
For whatever reason, and there's lots of reasons that those things, you know, kind of happen. So contracts, until there is a contract that the parties are wanting to get into, that is the time that it is brought before the public.
That is correct.
Okay, and that is the time that we are at right now, today as we speak. So thank you, Mr. Molinaro, for giving us your thoughts, giving us your vision. I think that your vision will be helpful in the future. I think, as you've heard by some of my colleagues, people in Catati are very opinionated about their community. So I am sure that you will, as Mr. Berich pointed out, like it or not, you will probably get a lot of input from the residents of Catati during this process. And I appreciate you being open to making it not be a cookie cutter. When I first heard Hard Rock, I like go, "Oh, God, Hard Rock." I'd been to the one in Las Vegas, and I imagine, you know, this pool with all these people in the bar, you know, and I'm just like, "Well, this is not, this is not Catati." So I was glad to hear that this is, you know, a different kind. I am intrigued by the fact that it is a family trust that's owning this. Your family is taking this on, and that you have been part of Sonoma County for a very long time. So you, you do understand the area, which, you know, when people talk about local, you understand, you know, what the, what the local products are. I was pleased to see and hear one of the ideas that you have in the parking lot, to have fruit trees in the parking lot so people within the community can come and pick fruits from the trees. I think that's a, you know, just, that's a novel idea, not something that I would have, would have thought of. So it's the Hard Rock word, I think, that people kind of have to get used to. I think you said it very nicely, you had to get used to it, used to it, too. And I think that that's sort of, I think, if we move forward with this, that's what we need to work on it, is it isn't, it isn't a Las Vegas Hard Rock Hotel that you're thinking about there. So anyways, I'm hoping that we can come to an agreement on that great input from the public. I would ask the public to please stay involved, because that's when we get the best projects, is when people don't just come and drop and run, that they stay involved. Though it'll be a long time, as was pointed out. It's going to be, you know, next August before we probably even see something. So the earlier input, the better. I think that it forms a better project as we move forward. And with that, I believe, Mr. Moore, you haven't had comments yet?
No, I haven't, and I had a couple of quick questions.
Okay, oh, okay.
If I may. How long have we had the transient occupancy tax on the books here in Catati?
Yeah, I don't know, but it's been a long time.
Right, so a hotel is not a new idea. So in the years that I've been involved in the community, through the accordion festival, through back-to-school with Sonoma State University, through the Chamber of Commerce, the one thing that I've heard over and over and over again is that the city really needs to look at sustainable economic development that will keep the city moving forward in a diverse manner so that we're not dependent on a lows for taxes coming in. Because God knows, something happens to the lows, and they change their mind, then we're down. And then we've got a measure of G that sunsets in six and a half years, seven years, something like that, and then we're in fiscal dire straits. So I think this is an opportunity that we've talked about for years. As Councilmember Skimmel was talking about, you go to these events, and people are like, "Why don't we have a little hotel in Catati? Why don't we have a boutique hotel?" For years, we had a potential developer that was interested in there, but they sat and sat and sat and never did anything. And finally, we said, "You know, let's put it out as an RFP and see what comes back." Looking at the Hard Rock, and then looking at the Reverb, and some of the things that they do where they've got the brand name to get people to come into town to actually book a place, and then more of a boutique style that fits in with the music theme, and a little bit more suburban versus urban, I think is a wonderful opportunity to look at. If we get into this down the road, and for some reason it doesn't work for the developers, and it doesn't work for the city, it's not going to happen. But I think we've got to start somewhere, I think it's a great opportunity. Things can be mitigated, hopefully, so that it's fit with the community and fit with the citizens, but I think it's a step forward. The issues of working with Rancho Adobe Fire District, I think, are nothing that cannot be worked out, or nothing is insurmountable. You know, those types of things, I think, as the process moves forward, if it's something that continues to move forward, I'm sure that we'll look at those issues, you know. And I just, to me, I'm excited about it. I think it's something that we can look forward to if it's a nice little fit in the community, and this is an opportunity to open up that door and see what happens. And if it works, great, and if not, then we keep going. But, you know, a greater economic diversity for the community and making it more sustainable and moving forward, I think this helps to fit within some of those goals. And those are my thoughts on it.
Yeah, just a last comment. I agree with my colleague, I agree to some excitement for what the potential might be with this. I mean, the key word here is economic development. This is something we've been working on for a while, you begin to see some of these things bear fruit. And in this particular area, I mean, what an amazing area. How many places in Sonoma County, a very popular destination and a pretty great place to live, will you find real estate available, this much real estate available, by Highway 101 in downtown section? That's a rarity. Then for us, this is almost fully half of our downtown, our downtown is not that terribly big. There is some really big potential there, because the point is, this is not some green field at the far edge of town by the urban interface. This is right in the heart of downtown next to Highway 101. It will be developed at some point, probably in the relatively near future. Who knows what the economy does, maybe a lot longer, but at some point, somebody will develop it. You have to ask yourself as a community, what do you see coming in there? What sort of things would follow? If, I would use the example of just opening to any old development whatsoever, suppose we had a Craig and Auto Parts company, not to pick on Craig and Auto Parts, or a Motel 6, not to pick on Motel 6, all fine establishments and businesses. But you can see the general type of business and development, and then follow from that, probably more strip malls, things like that. If you take a look at something that's leveled and developed as boutique, small, upscale, featuring the best of Sonoma County's food, wine, and beer, something that arguably, as it appears, will certainly improve the look and feel of the downtown and increase property values, and certainly is being designed with a nod to walkability, connection to the downtown, as well as very green construction practices and operation, that's a pretty good thing, because it harbages what follows it. Will probably be something of value that could be good for all of us. People that live here, people that work here, the fire district, everybody, I think, can get value from that. So I'm hopeful tonight, I get the sense having a local developer that knows this area and has personal investment that isn't looking to flip this is a big thing. I think that provides a lot of value to me. And if we just look at the success Catati can have at drawing places to, for example, at the accordion festival, I guarantee you'll be busy then. I don't know if I can guarantee you'll be fully booked, but I frankly would be shocked if you weren't. And with the ability of lodging closer, there's the chance synergistically to do more things like that. So I agree with my colleague's excitement about this, I think this could be good. And we'll have a year, at least as a community, to assess this, see what works, tinker around the margins, and make sure... this, see what works, tinker around the margins, and make sure it works good for everybody involved. So, you know, that's the goal at least, for everybody who wants to get there, should be able to get there. So I think I'll be supporting this tonight.
Well, it sounds like we're, we've rolled around enough here? Have we, are we done with our comments? Because I'm ready to make a motion. This is how you move the meetings along, people.
Go for it.
I moved to authorize the city manager to execute a binding development agreement with Catati Hotel LLC for the development of a Reverb Hotel by Hard Rock.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let that show a 5-0 vote. Thank you for that, and good luck, everyone. With that, we will move on to, we're going to stay with the whole regular agenda, correct? Okay, I just want to be clear here. The next item then is review of the assignment of solid waste garbage franchise agreement to Recology. A staff report, should we give?
Madam Mayor, I would recuse myself on this particular issue.
Okay.
As we have a economic involvement.
Okay.
Not nearly enough, but you know, enough.
Okay. Is John gone? Okay. Yes, we are at 13B, the review, I'll say it again, just so, the review of the assignment of solid waste garbage franchise agreement to Recology. So with that, do we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this item, as you said, 13B, is the consideration of a waste assignment for the existing franchise, solid waste franchise agreement. So solid waste, in layman's language, is garbage, otherwise known as solid waste. And we have some people here that can also help answer some of the questions for this pretty thick item tonight. We have some guests from Recology, we have, we actually have three now. So we have Fred at the end there, that's Fred Stemler, Ed Farewell, and Jim Saliers, representing Recology. And we also have some representatives from R3, the consultant that did a lot of the analysis for the waste assignment. We have William Schoen and Carrie Baxter. Thank you. That are also able to answer questions on some of the R3 reports that are in the packet. Okay, so, again, as way of background, the city entered into what is known as a franchise agreement with Redwood Empire Disposal on April 9th of 2013, for a term of 10 years to perform solid waste collection and related education and waste diversion activities. And then on September 24th of 2014, the city entered into what's called a waste delivery agreement with Republic Services, they're the operator of the central landfill. And this is, this is an agreement that Catati and other Sonoma County cities entered into that committed our solid waste to central landfill to permit Republic to assume operations of central landfill from Sonoma County. And an attachment to that waste delivery agreement, otherwise known as Exhibit C to that agreement, was executed by the franchise haulers, in this case, Redwood Empire Disposal, agreeing to the city's agreement to commit our waste to central landfill. If that wasn't totally confusing, you can come back to that. But those are the, those are the main things that we're talking about tonight. There's a, in the packet, right after the staff report, there's an assignment agreement, which is the agreement that would assign the franchise from Redwood Empire Disposal, otherwise known as the Rado Group, to Recology. And a second agreement, which is this Exhibit C to the waste delivery agreement, that basically Recology would sign, saying that they agree with our waste commitment agreement with Republic. So those are the two agreements that we're talking about tonight. And the assignment agreement that I just mentioned is on packet page 146, in case you didn't know where it was, anyone in the audience doesn't know where that is. And the second agreement, which is, which will bind Recology to the city's waste delivery agreement with Republic Services, is packet page 143. All right. So in, in January of this year, the city council reviewed and discussed a detailed rate review that was conducted for Redwood Empire Disposal. And there were some performance questions that came up related to Redwood Empire Disposal's compliance with the franchise agreement. And so at that time, the city council requested that staff, through R3, perform what's called a performance review, also under the auspices of the franchise agreement, which allows for these sort of things. And the performance review is in the packet, that's one of the documents that's attached to the staff report. And the primary findings are summarized in a letter that the city sent to Recology dated October 10th of this year, and it's also included in the packet, one of the many items that are attached to the staff report. But in a nutshell, what it said was that Redwood Empire Disposal needed to implement the citywide commercial food waste collection program, and the citywide dry commercial mixed waste collection program, which was either partially implemented or wasn't implemented yet. And there's a number of critical issues, performance issues, that came up in that performance review, including regularly operating overweight vehicles, non-uniform carts out in the field, replacing some broken carts that need to get replaced, the need to limit and control vehicle maintenance and report maintenance issues with regard to vehicles, making sure that employees wear uniforms and suitable identification, and getting quarterly and annual reports in the, in a format that convey the, all the proper information. So that's, that's kind of in a nutshell what came out of the performance review, and you can read it in extreme detail in the packet if you're so interested. On August 15th of this year, 2017, the city received a letter from Recology requesting assignment of the solid waste franchise from the Rado Group or Redwood Empire Disposal. And we received, so as we were finishing up the performance review that the council requested in January, the assignment request came in, and so this is why it's all kind of wrapped up in one item tonight. And to review the assignment, again, this is within the auspices of the franchise agreement, there's a, there's a section for everything in the franchise agreement, including assignments. And so the city contracted with R3 to, to do a portion of the assignment review. And just to give you a little bit of context, so this is happening countywide, and I'll get into a little bit more detail in a minute, but, but the Rado Group or Redwood Empire Disposal, they're, they're winding down operations countywide, and so all of the cities that were served by the Rado Group, either in Marin County or Sonoma County, are going through this assignment review process right now. And on behalf of the cities in Sonoma County, the city of Petaluma took the lead on sort of the overall county assignment issues, and some individual cities such as Catati also had, we overlaid that with a review of impacts that would affect Catati specifically. So rather than duplicate this whole assignment review countywide in each jurisdiction, it would just be much more efficient, cost efficient, and time efficient, to just have a single entity running the overall assignment review, and then individual jurisdictions such as Catati, looking at the elements that aren't covered in the overall county review. So that's how that was structured. And Recology has stated that it is purchasing all of the physical assets of the Rado Group, which, there's a list, a list of what that means in the, in the staff report. But the franchise agreement contains a process for the city to review and consent to the assignment, and essentially, these require that the Rado Group, or in this case, in conjunction with Recology, provide the city with proof that the proposed assignee, which is Recology in this case, has the refuse management experience on a scale equal to or exceeding the scale of operations conducted by the Rado Group, our current hauler, that they have three, that they provide three to five years of audited financial statements and any other information that's required to ensure that they can fulfill the terms of the franchise agreements in a timely, safe, and effective manner. And R3 generally reviewed these following areas, which, again, are listed in the staff report for everyone's benefit. They were financial ability, collection and street sweeping operations, safety, facilities and environmental compliance, customer service, outreach, education, and diversion in references. And R3 also reviewed the current franchise operations of the Rado Group in Catati, as I mentioned earlier, and made specific recommendations, which we just covered. And overall, from an operational and financial perspective, sort of the punchline to all this is that R3 found that Recology is qualified to perform services under the franchise agreement, and there are specific findings that are detailed in the staff report. So in terms of, in terms of impacts of the, or potential impacts of the assignment, it's expected that customers in Catati will most likely see, you know, some more responsive service, just because of the more robust organizational support and procedures that a larger company like Recology has in place. And the average equipment ages across the franchise cities, we would expect would probably come down overall. However, you know, with equipment replacement comes, does come, comes costs. So based on information provided to R3 by Recology, as well as R3's own assessment of the asset purchase and replacement in the agreements, it's expected that it would result in a request for a rate change in the, in the future, in the near future. And the reasons generally include equipment replacements and higher labor costs. Now, I will say, again, tonight, we're just talking about the assignment, we're not talking about any sort of rate change, but that's just something that was flagged by R3, not just for Catati, but for all the cities that are considering the assignment. And then if the city council tonight were to consent to this assignment and authorize staff to enter into the required assignment and waste commitment agreements, staff would then work with R3 and Recology to ensure as smooth as a possible transition of service to customers here in Catati, in accordance with the transition plan, that's in the, it's in the council item, and related information. And there's also some detailed responses from Recology. These are council, or packet pages 162 and 165, where Recology will be addressing the issues identified with, from the performance review of Redwood Empire Disposal, including overweight vehicles, the uniform residential carts, broken carts, vehicle preventative maintenance and reporting, employee uniforms, complete quarterly and annual reporting, the commercial food waste program, the dry waste, mixed, the dry commercial mixed waste program, and then commercial communication about the pending change, if the council moves forward with it. And then, lastly, just some main points on the assignment agreement, which, again, is packet page 146. It requires written notices to the city of the closing date of the, this is the closing date of the purchase between Recology and the Rado Group. It requires Recology to provide a list of vehicles within 60 days of assignment, standardized carts in Catati within 12 months, commercial food waste program per AB 1826 by January 1 of 2019, and by January 1 of 2020, a citywide program for all commercial accounts. Dry commercial mixed waste program in place by January 1 of 2019, audit all accounts to ensure correct billing for services within the first 12 months of service, requires acceptable guarantee and insurance for the new, for taking over the franchise, requires full payment of any outstanding balances still owed by the, by the Rado Group at the time of sale, and no change in residential routes or sweeping days without notification and approval by the city, assurance that they are aware of and accept the assignment of the franchise agreement, including terms of the detailed rate review, and then liquidated damages provisions. So with all that, I'll also say that in the reporting, the city, under the franchise agreement, also has the ability to require that any franchise hauler reports certain items, such as tonnage of material from street sweep, street sweeping, for example, which is important, at least from a staff perspective, because of our municipal stormwater permit, MS4 permit, we need to report that now with our municipal permit, and also reporting changes in vehicles that are dedicated to Catati, those sort of things. So those are all things that can be included in the annual reports, for example. And so that was a, there was a lot of material in that packet, a lot of it was kind of reference background material, just to give you guys context, if you want more detail on anything. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions on the staff report, and like I said earlier, we also have representatives from Recology and R3 here that can answer questions as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I was just going to briefly reiterate. So we had already expected a rate increase, even if things remain status quo, as far as who was in charge of things. Is that right? I think that was back in January, or?
So there was a, there was a request for a rate increase, and then we did a detailed rate review, and then in that discussion, that discussion happened in January. The direction at that time was, we think there's some performance issues that need to be looked into, so look into those, and then come back, and then we'll talk about this request for a rate change.
Okay, but we were, we were already planning that prices potentially could be going up because of all of the legal issues and everything that were going on?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it was, it was part of the discussion, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. That was the only question I had.
Just a couple of quick items. So the Rado Group is still our garbage hauler, collector, street sweeper?
That is correct.
Notice the emphasis on the street sweeper?
Yes.
You know, I know this was a holiday weekend, but I know we still had garbage and recycling and green waste service. I know in the extended neighborhood where I live, there was no street sweeping going on, and in some of our neighborhoods, there are trees that are European sycamores that were planted, which in my opinion, never should have been planted in a yard, it's a whole nother story. Damian's heard it way too many times. Well, they're big leaves, and they don't compost, and there are, in front of one house, at least, I think it's on Wren, there are leaves that are like about two feet high. I don't think a street sweeper could even take these now, but they've been piling up for a couple of weeks. I've been kind of surprised that a street sweeper hasn't gone through, so it wouldn't hurt to remind them, maybe this next week, when they do their service dates in all the neighborhoods, that they should be street sweeping the next day like they normally have. That aside, I, I mean, I've read about Recology's qualifications, like, again, my opinion is, it seems like they have it, and one thing I want to give you guys kudos on is that you had a meeting with our city manager and probably staff on the 3rd of November, and on the 6th of November, that's three days later, you had a letter out with replies to the questions that were left. I like to see that kind of stuff. So that was very impressive, and I just want to thank you for doing that. And I'll save all of my comments for after public comment.
Mark, do you have comments?
Questions? Three questions, Madam Mayor, thank you. Let's see, to start with, this would be, I can ask staff, it may be a question that Recology or R3 may want to chime in, I'll leave that to who seems best. But first of all, I wanted to ask a little bit, one of the questions appears to be making sure that vehicles, countywide, but specifically in each region, the vehicle inventory is brought up to date, and obviously, there's going to be a cost associated with that. And what I'm looking for is getting a sense of what that cost might be associated with this particular inventory for this particular community, and what timeframe Recology might be thinking of moving to reach compliance, because obviously, that will impact cost and potential rate increases, and what that looks like potentially as a rate request, how ultimately terrifying or hardly unnoticed, or probably something in between those two that looks like, because clearly, that's an important question. I see information on the general fleet in here, and that's helpful, thank you, but it isn't broken out specifically. I do see that you're looking at at least 10% replacement of the fleet in the first year, but that's overall for the whole county, so that doesn't let me know how Catati particularly stands out. So if you could give me some information on that, that might be a Recology question, I'm guessing. I would appreciate it.
So I'll just, I'll start off, and then I think Ed can maybe add any clarity here, but-
Happy to be tag teamed, too. Happy to be tag teamed, too, if that works.
Yeah, we might be tag teaming on this one. So, the, the general process would be, once they take over, as I understand it, is that they would be doing that review, and they'd be providing us with an equipment replacement schedule in the first, I want to say-
60 days.
60 days, yeah, thank you, yeah, thank you.
I did read it.
So, I, I think that would be the, the, the start of understanding that replacement schedule, with regard to any questions about rates, I'll leave that to them.
Okay. Yeah, just a general sense of what we're looking at, the degree of the issue in this community would be helpful, since we're essentially taking this step first before we get to that. I mean, ideally, we would have had at least a guest minute at this to start with.
Yeah, so, my name's Fred Stemler, I'm the general manager of Recology Sonoma Marin, so, thank you for having us here tonight, and fire away with questions, we like transparency. So, this, within 60 days, we'll have a much better sense of what's going to be replaced. There's also a lot of pieces that are going to be moving around, around the county, so, for instance, Santa Rosa initiated the procurement of 55 vehicles, they wanted to replace the entire fleet, which was part of the large reason why there was a very substantial rate increase that happened with their RFP. With that are some benefits that are going to be around the surrounding community, because vehicles that are currently in service and fully functional in those communities will then roll out and be replaced with new fleets, and open up the opportunity for a trickle-down effect for vehicles that are still perfectly good, and have a lot of useful life left into them, to then be used in surrounding communities. From our estimates, we think that about 40 of the 330 pieces of equipment are due to be replaced within the first 18 months or so, and that's generally due to air regulations or the estimated quality of the equipment, but before we actually run the business and get in there with our mechanics and see it, we can't make any conclusive decisions that say, I mean, other than anything that is disqualified because it is no longer road legal, be it air regs or whatever, the, the, the regulation that we're actually non, that the vehicle would be noncompliant with, we need to get in there, because there is no hard, fast rule that says, after X years or so many miles, a vehicle is useless and should be, should be trashed. So, as far as the rate impact on this goes, is, my understanding is, your, your rate structure is, is rather set, so, replacement of vehicles would not trigger a new rate review, so, in the, in the agreement that will be assigned, that we would assume, is essentially at 70% of CPI over a 12-month rolling period, so, we assume that risk, and we will outfit the fleet.
Good, good, thank you. I, I'm not, with that piece, I'm not going to ask you to explain a little more about how you're moving them around, I did see that as a concern piece in here, about how vehicles are distributed to make sure that works for each community.
Yes.
But what you're telling me is, basically, if there's vehicles moved around, it will be to the benefit, not to the negative, of any of the communities that receive new vehicles, or changes in the-
Absolutely, there's two priorities, essentially, as the general manager that trickles down, is it's safety and service. Those are the two things that essentially distinguish our career, or distinguish our services throughout the communities, so, that's, I'm not going to put something out into the community that's going to risk either of those things.
As long as you're talking improving our fleet, and it's not an additional cost, that's, that's a discussion we enjoy hearing, Fred.
That's my plan, so, if there's anything, if there's any sort of variances, if there's something that's out of the norm, of course, we always work in a partnership with our communities, so if we find something that's a, you know, completely out of, of whack, it will be a partnership discussion where we would come and discuss with you, discuss with city staff, and try and come to some mutual understanding, and if we can't, then we go back to the contract.
Right. So, next question for you, and I think this would probably be for you, so I'll ask you to stay there. One of the things, obviously, will impact costs in the future, are the cost of wages.
Sure.
And the cost of wages will be higher with Recology, you have a union contract, that's a good thing in many ways, people need living wages, I'm supportive of that, but I wanted to ask, according to R3, that I saw in the packet, they did not have a wage benefit, wage benefit information for review, to really narrow down into what those costs might be for this, and I, since that cost differential, potentially, long-term, would be borne throughout the county, I wanted a little information on why we're not seeing that, and what can be done to remedy that, I mean, I think that's an important piece.
Why you're not seeing a deeper analysis on labor-specific?
Yeah, I saw our consultant basically said that they weren't giving wage benefit information they had requested for review in the packet, and that, I did outline that because I thought, that's a concern, they should have that. Is there, is this a misconnection perhaps, or something?
I, I will let R3 speak to what they put in their report, I, I will say, just generally on the topic, is that wages have varied from what I've seen thus far in the transition period, and, and there are some people who are, are making a living wage, and there are other people who have opportunities to improve, we wanted to baseline that across the board, and I, and while it did increase the wages for some, it held for others, it, we did not negotiate outrageous agreements with the Teamsters, that's the outfit that we went through, our priority is really to create a living wage, so that we have people who can afford to live in the communities that they, that they service, and, and can essentially provide their, for their families, but the business still remains viable, we, we have an ESOP, that's an employee ownership plan, so, everybody's an employee owner here, so, that's, that's essentially the structure, it's in the packet, but that, that's how Recology's structured, but we are a business, so, we, we have to operate and be competitive in the market. So, there was some, there, there will be some wage changes that happen with the, with the CBA that comes in, the collective bargaining that comes into place, but it's not an outright, it's not an outrageous change, and I don't think it's fair to assume, just de facto, that there will be a significant increase in labor costs that are going to result in higher, higher labor costs, and therefore, higher rates.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep.
And I'm going to ask, what was the last name again, I'm sorry?
William Shone with R3.
Mr. Shone, thank you, and thank you for some very impressive research material in that report, that was very thorough and very helpful, and helping us all digest something incredibly difficult to take down on a Thanksgiving weekend, so I appreciate R3's work on that. If you could just speak to that, and perhaps, this was just something that jumped out at me, and it's not the issue that I saw it was?
Yeah, I mean, maybe you can point it out, but as, as far as the, the wages, so, there's a couple of things, first is all, is your rates now, and how those rates were set, and those were set specifically based on the Rado Group's expenses.
Right.
So, once Recology comes online, they do have the option to conduct a detailed rate review, similar to what we just did with the Rado Group, which is based on the audited financial statements, once that's, you get a full year of audited financials, the next year, they can request a rate review, so that, that wouldn't happen for, I think, at least a, a several years, because of the need for them to have a full year of financial statements. So, at that point, their, their wages would come into play in terms of the impact on the rates, as would any vehicle expenses or anything else, so you're, you're looking at a period of time, at least per the requirements in the rate, in the franchise agreement for a rate adjustment, several years before Recology would be able to come back and have a detailed rate review, as provided in the agreement, and set rates based on their costs, so that's where labor and, and their vehicle costs would then come into play.
Which is logical. So, from R3's perspective, were you given the information in terms that you asked for, enough to, to satisfy your needs for this?
I think everything we, you know, we were not able to get a copy of the, the agreement, the asset purchase agreement specifically, but we did get many of the components of that, and we looked at, again, safety, customer service, financial capabilities, all the aspects that are important in terms of the ability of the company to assume the, the agreements and, and operate effectively, and, and we found that they're certainly capable and financially viable in terms of taking over operations and moving forward. We've also had the opportunity to work the last couple of years with the city of San Francisco, where Recology is their, one of their largest, or their largest contracts, so we're very familiar with the company and their staff, and they're a very good company, you know, I think one of the issues that you've had with the Rado Group, you've had low rates, but you get what you pay for, staff at the Rado Group, most of the staff was very good, but they didn't have the corporate support, that's going to be very different with Recology, you have that level of corporate support that will flow through to all aspects of their operations, safety, customer service, and, and all other things that they operate, so I think it's a, in our, our opinion, it's a, a good, a good company, and they're certainly in a good position to take over and, and perform well throughout the, throughout the region.
Good, thank you, that's helpful, I guess a little clarity. And one last quick question for staff, for Mr. Obed, if you could give me some clarity on other realistic options, because as I look at this, I, I'm not really seeing any, is, just confirmed from my senses, the size of Kattati, we can't essentially do a gross for proposals and draw other competitors that serve just this region, Recology happens to be here because they're in a position to assume TRW's contract, so, I'm not seeing a lot of different directions, even assuming somebody wanted to go in any, is that a fair assessment?
I think that's fair, I don't believe that we would have any real viable path by putting it back out at this point.
Yeah, yeah, just looking at past experience in other areas, and, all right, just had to ask that, thank you very much.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. Can someone help me, and I don't know who gets to answer this, so, the report and all of the mentions in here about qualifications are all about the big Recology, and then it's very careful to put in here that, well, we're not really contracting with the big Recology, we are contracting with a brand-new company, which is Recology Sonoma Marin, so, help me, someone help me understand how the qualifications of someone who is not really part of it, I'm just, I don't know how that works.
So, I, I touched on it briefly, so, Recology is an ESOP, so it's an employee stock ownership plan, that is the overarching organization, so, that essentially creates the, the S corporation, essentially, that, that everybody falls under, so, there's, there, there has to be a, an overarching entity, but the service itself is performed by subsidiaries, and those subsidiaries are run by the employee owners as well, so, I'm an ESOP holder, as is the street sweeper that operates the truck, I, I come from Recology Western Oregon before this, so I lived, I started out at Recology Corporate, I've worked at Sunset, I then moved to Vacaville, then McMinnville, to Recology Western Oregon, and then just moved back for this one, so, at each of these, every one is, is a unique subsidiary that essentially falls underneath this, this larger corporate entity that you're, that you're seeing, there's, there's an executive office there, we also have, we have essentially very large regionalized services that are shared, so that you can get economies of scale, so you, we have, we have an overarching safety program that's out of there, we have environmental compliance that's out of there, we have human resources that comes out of there, IT, these are, these are, these are large, large divisions that can essentially yield benefits to all, when it's centralized, and, and you, you build economies of scale, so, that's what the larger umbrella is, they don't pick up the trash, so, they don't pick up the recycling, and they don't do the compost, and they don't, they don't build the relationships with the city of Kattati, and with the city of Sebastopol, and Santa Rosa, and everybody around here, somebody has to be boots on the ground, that's collecting, and that's, that's Recology Sonoma Marin here.
But when R3 did their report, did they do the report specifically on the Recology Sonoma Marin, because as you said, it's, you know, what are the operations, what is the safety, what are, you know, that's at that level, not at the, so I'm-
Yes, so, it's, it's a blend of both, so-
Okay.
Recology Sonoma Marin currently does not operate, because we haven't completed the assignments, and the assignments are part of the asset purchase agreement, which will give us the tools and equipment in order to complete all of this work, so you can't look at Recology Sonoma Marin right now and say, "Show me your performance," so instead, R3 spent time looking at, at Recology's overall operations at both a corporate level and at other subsidiaries, in order to verify that we are financially solvent, that we can perform the work, that we have a clean record, there's a track record of performance, that's how, that's how we could be vetted through this process.
So, what happens to a subsidiary if they don't, I don't know, toe the corporate line, if they don't perform the way all other subsidiaries do?
Well, as with most businesses that, that operate out of more than one business, that at least I've worked for, or were been a part of, is that there are levels of accountability and leadership in order to direct staff, so we have mission and vision statements that come down from corporate, and there's trainings that take place, that we all participate in, can somebody go rogue and, and essentially do what they want? Yes, they can, but my boss is sitting behind me here, who I share an office with, so, when I do that, I'm going to hear about it very quickly, and be replaced, frankly, if I, if I, if I don't toe the line, I guess, to use, you know-
Yeah.
-your, your phrase, though, that's not our style, we, we're pretty aligned, we, in service and safety is, is our priorities, and we kind of take a lot of pride in doing it.
Okay, yeah, it just was, like you said, there, the Sonoma Marin is not in existence yet, to, so to say you've reviewed it, and you can vouch for all these things, how can you when it doesn't exist, and that's kind of that connection?
You're right, I guess, I guess what's, what is real in that, is that we are buying all of the assets, we are buying this contract and all of the, all of the good and bad that's in it, as well as extending offers to virtually all of the employees that are here, so clearly, there's some things that need to improve in the service area, as you noted in the sweeping, which I would ask you to bag some of those leaves, I have a sycamore next to mine, and we cannot pick up two feet worth of leaves, but, this is, we are going to be essentially continuing and tuning up and applying some of the, the service improvements and efficiencies that we outlined in that huge book, around 150 or so, I think.
So, my colleague asked about the vehicles, and, in fact, there are specific vehicles that are currently assigned to Kattati, and they are listed in the report.
Yes.
And we, on average, I think I have this right, four and a half years is the average age of ours, which is, generally, if you look at all the rest of the cities, that's pretty darn good.
Not bad.
No, it's not bad, so, when I hear you say, "Well, you know, Santa Rosa wants to replace all theirs, and we're going to move them all around," what's, what's to keep from happening that all of a sudden, we went from a 4.5 to we're ending up with all these, you know, leftovers, rather than, you know, keep that? So, what assurances do we have that it isn't going to get worse, if you're going to move things around? You could take one of our newer vehicles then, and move it to somebody who's demanded.
Sure, so, I guess there's a bit of carrot and stick in it, and that's in the contract that we're, that we're assuming, so, generally, there's liquidated damages for performance, so, if we fail to perform, if I'm going to put inferior equipment out on the street and not execute to those performance standards, then there's usually monetary penalties that go along, and as a CPA, I really don't like those, so, that's, that's one simple way to do it, the other, the other part is, if I provide lousy service, there's a higher likelihood at the end of the, this contract, that you're not going to vote to extend it, so that's another very motivating factor for me.
Okay, I really liked the education stuff in here, because with our current provider, that has been something that they got rid of long, long, long ago, I said, as our representative on the Waste Management Agency, and unfortunately, they've kind of had to take up-
Yeah.
-you know, all that for a long time, so I like that you guys have a focus of education.
Yeah.
The one aspect of that, that I needed a little bit of help with, is, you talked about refusing to take people's cans, and that they would be tagged, and you'd have to call back, and, so, as we all know, it takes a while to educate folks, to do what they're supposed to do, and you'll have different standards, and you'll have different requirements, and they'll get it, but how long is that time period before you start not accepting people's cans?
Yeah.
I, I don't want to get a phone call the week after you do this, and say, you know, this whole street got, you know, tickets.
Yeah, so, generally, I would look at it like a phantom league three-strike rule here, so we, we may even give an extra one after that third strike, just to, to let it set in, so, I, in Santa Rosa, they went to extent to actually define a five-strike process, and essentially, there's a notification, a notification, and then a really strict notification, and then you start fining on that third notification, so, I don't want to start dumping the material as recycling, let's, let's use recycling as an example, right, so, if somebody has a load of spaghetti, leftover spaghetti from Thanksgiving inside their recycling, that just ruined a whole lot of material, so, that is going to contaminate in all of the fibers, it's going to weaken the bonds, it's going to, it's going to put, essentially, like, if, if there's 10% or more, there's a visual inspection that's done, and they're going to say- there's a visual inspection that's done and they're going to say, this is, this is going to cause more harm than it is going to be good. We would tag it. It would then be dumped as trash. Same thing happens the next week. Tag it, dump this trash, monetary fine with a tagging. The tags are sent each time back to the office where they're then notated at customer service. So there is information there. When, when somebody calls in and they say, I got this tag. What is this? It's not just information that's kept with the driver. And then at, at strike four and strike five is when you start looking at pulling those services from the curb and they're no longer eligible to participate for up to one year.
Okay, so you do kind of stretch it. And that's what I wanted to, I didn't get that in here. I just saw the tickets. I'm like, oh, God.
Yeah.
So, okay. I believe that that is all my questions for right now. So thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else have any other questions? No? Did you, okay. All right, then I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Lori?
We all know Rado Grow Group has, Services has sucked basically for the last six months especially. I've called Craig Scott numerous times. The one thing that, and so I am for the, this company taking over, but we don't have any, I know it's, the rates are not set, but it says that the costs and everything will be passed on to the ratepayers eventually. Not to, the community voice said that Roanoke Park would have 20% rate increases. So I was wondering what the general thought was for the future of Cattati's rate increases. And another thing was, the Press Democrat had an article yesterday about how the, the central landfill is being impacted by the fires. And I was wondering if the, because all the debris has to go there, they're having like 500 trucks or something today. And I'm wondering if they're, have made plans for, and they might even fill up the landfill so much quicker and then whether they've made any long-term plans about what happens when there's no landfill space at Central? What they're going to do? So those are just some of the thoughts I had on it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, George?
Well, first, I'd like to commend City Manager Obed because I think he gave a very, very good report. Very difficult issue. I think it was very thorough. However, we know the who, we know the what, we know the when, but we haven't really discussed much about the why. And it's always very interesting here when we change garbage contractors over the years. We've seen many come and go actually in 20 something years. You know, it sounds like Cattati and these other towns are being made an offer they can't refuse. You know, almost godfather style. What's going on here, which the council and maybe the other city councils in the county aren't really touching on, is that kind of feels like a big growing monopoly here where we really don't have many choices to go anyplace else. And we're kind of, you know, like Mr. Lammon has said, the water issue is complicated. Garbage is very complicated too. But we want to look at the, the root issues of what's going on here is we really don't get a real good indication of why we're, why this assignment's taking place. We talk about better service and so on and so forth and corporate umbrellas. But the fact is, you talk about a livable wage. We, we, the public and the council never talked about a livable wage, what the hell that means. Sonoma County real estate prices have gone up 9% in the last year. So these people working for the garbage company are going to be paying 9% more for the real estate they're buying than they did last year. And this livable wage is going to be impacted because of all this. Fuel prices are up. Governor Jerry Brown has tacked on a nice big healthy gas tax on our backs. That's going to be passed on. We're going to see that with the garbage haulers as well in their overall report on their next rate increase. And, you know, we're kind of caught. I mean, this is a difficult place for these cities to be in. Caught in a situation where we really can't go anywhere for real competition. Competition's kind of getting eaten up slowly but surely. And it's, it's very concerning that we're in this position to almost being forced into these agreements. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak on this subject? Sure.
Just a very quick thought. I very much applaud the notion of enforcing recycling. And it's, it's worked well in San Francisco, for example. However, the one concern is, is once you put your cans down on the street, you no longer have control over it. And I don't know about you, but my neighbors frequently put their spaghetti in my recycling. So it is a concern. And, and if it's going to be enforced, it needs to be, it needs to be thought through. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good question.
Okay, a couple of those, I think I can answer them. I don't think that we know ultimately what the rate increase will be. Roanoke Park, you know, said 20%. I think Santa Rosa was way, way higher than that. The reality, if you look at a lot of the R3 material that they've been putting out on our garbage stuff for a really long time, we are so under what everybody else is in magnitudes. So for instance, if we're paying $10, other people around this region are paying $30. So we have had what we've had, be it, as you said, I believe it sucks, but you know, that's what we have. So, so in order to get a quality service, we may have to pay more. Our, our agreement only allows certain things. So as long as our agreement is in place, you know, we do have, you know, something that as, as you said, they're willing to take on that agreement, the good, the bad and the ugly. And some of that is that they're locked in to those, you know, those increases and asking for that. So the fire debris in the landfill, yes, it's filling up, but the landfill, and I won't get, and the gentleman from R3 may know this, I'm going off the top of my head. But we had extended the life that was out there. It was supposed to be like 10 years and then it went up to 20 years and then it went up to 25 years. It, it, because we were doing so well, it was increasing. This is taking some off, but I don't think that it's going to take off 20 years' worth. And Republic is in the process right now with their permitting to open up another, another spot up there. And I can't remember whether they're done with all their permitting or not, but there is another spot up there. So yes, it's filling up faster than we thought, but you know, hopefully if we get a new vendor, they can help us recycle more and, and get that down and, and make that hole last us a little bit longer. As far as George's concern on the why, well, the why is, is that Rado's gone. They're going away. This company is, is taking, they, they're selling this, this APA agreement. They're selling all their assets. So their assets, they won't exist. They won't have assets, so they will not be able to do the contract. So as was pointed out earlier, we either have to go out for an RFP and get another server, service provider, or we can assign the contract that we already have, which has time left on it, and I forget how many years, but a good number of years left on it. And they will abide by that contract for that period of time. And then, you know, then, then we can look at it. But that's the why, is that basically once this is completed, Rado Group will cease to exist. Their assets will be gone and they cannot meet the commitments. Did I miss anything? Did I get that wrong?
Yeah, no, I think you have it all right. And the current franchise goes through 2023.
2020, I knew it was a long time. And as far as someone else putting things in someone else's container, I think that that's something that, that they will watch for on that. You know, if you say you didn't do that and you get a note, then I think if you report that, then that's something that, that they can, you know, they can work on with that. But that's horrible that someone's doing that too. Oh, that's okay. I just didn't know if you. Oh, oh, okay. Yeah. Okay, with that, comments, motion?
A few comments, if I might, Madam Mayor.
You certainly may.
I want to go back to the spaghetti and the can thing. I agree with you. I wonder if we could have sometime, if not tonight, in the future, a report back on exactly what the process would be through Recology and dealing with that, because I have a feeling it's probably a common problem. You probably have at least a decent process for trying to deal with that because I could see, some people will use it as an excuse to get out of getting a ticket, as, as you put it. And a lot of other people will be innocent people who have neighbors move garbage around. Because we've all, I'm looking at everybody nodding. I think that's happened to all of us once. I even, I put a few bobs for my recycle once and my neighbors too. So, so I've done it as well. So I would like to hear that back if we could. So let's see. Competition, yeah, it's true. Competition is very fierce in the waste industry and the end result of that is superior competitors usually remain at the end and cover larger areas. And that's a situation we're in. And the way to move forward in that situation is having a good contract. Cattati has had one historically. You'll see that by the fact that our rates are much lower. Luck, hard work, good staff, a fair deal by TRW, which I'll point out too, all those things. That means that the next negotiation, obviously, one interest will be to catch us up with the rest of the county. On the other hand, our interest will be to not do that. And as in all negotiations, we'll go back and forth, probably fall somewhere in the middle. And I would expect we will continue to have a good contract. So I think that's the path forward for us there. TRW, Mr. Rado, you know, a lot of years of really pretty good service. Obviously, there's some things, most notably the diversion, which is a concern. But obviously the worldwide collapse of recycling market caught TRW at a very bad time. And so now we have changes upon us. And I'll just say that overall, he may have run things close to the vest and slightly more inexpensively perhaps, but he will be missed when the bills start coming to better service. I will say that. So I appreciate what he brought and I look forward to, if we go forward, to seeing what Recology could bring from us. Comment to staff, I would like to see if this is what is required to clarify, clarification of the requirement to provide citywide commercial food waste and dry commercial mixed waste programs by sending whatever appropriate notification we need to. I would think that would be obvious, but let's just get it on record so everybody knows we want to see that move forward. And my thought, as well as the recommendation from R3 was obviously this is something we'll bear in mind with us for future rate increases. And I do believe I saw in here you had some dates for that potentially put forward too in the next couple of years, so.
For both of those programs, there's dates in the assignment agreement?
Good, we'd be looking forward to make sure that happens. And I think that wraps it up for me. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so let me jump in here for a second before, before anyone makes a motion.
Okay.
Just want to point out one thing that there is a, on the dais and at the back table, there's a, an updated waste, this is the franchise haulers agreement to be bound by the city's waste delivery commitment. It's the, is what was in the packet with just a couple references to attachments that are striked out. Right, so that's on the dais. That's one of the two agreements that we're talking about authorizing tonight. And, and so this, this would be, when you, assuming the council is going to make a motion to authorize it, I have some language if that's the direction you go. So let me know and I'll give you some specific language for that.
We're letting you know.
I'd like to make a motion, but I think I need to ask for some specific language. I'm assuming, do I need to mention amended waste commitment agreement?
Yes, so, okay, so here it is. The, the city, maybe the city council consents to approval and execution of the agreements, which are the assignment agreements and the waste commitment agreement, those two agreements. And also authorizing the city manager to sign all documents, make all revisions approved by the city attorney, which do not materially or substantially increase the city's obligations thereunder and take any actions necessary and appropriate to carry out and implement the intent of these agreements.
Now, I hope you're not expecting me to remember I write that all down.
Just say that's your motion.
So I'm going to say, I'm going to move that specific language and look for a second.
All right.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So let that show a 4-1. We have one recused. And that's a whole bunch of hundreds of pages.
Yeah, that's half the packet right there.
That's half the packet. And thank you for all the good information. And thank you, R3, for your information and helping. And thank you, Recology's information. Thank you, everyone, to get us to this point. Okay, so with that, I believe that we are moving on to item 13C. Receive and file the 2016, 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, for the city of Cattati.
Madam Mayor, do you need to acknowledge that I'm back for those that might not be viewing it? Councilman?
So.
Just a question.
Councilman Moore has resumed the dais to join us. He's unrecused himself. Welcome back.
Well, thank you so much.
Norm, you have a report for us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Norm Veloso, Director of Admin Services. It is a great honor to present to you the city's first ever comprehensive annual financial report, which presents a complete accounting of all government funds and operating activities of the city of Cattati. The development of this CAFR is a significant continuation of the city's ongoing efforts to promote citizen trust, accountability, and maintain an open and transparent government. This comprehensive annual financial report is not only an instrument of financial disclosure or financial transparency, but it also complies with the accounting requirements determined by the Governmental Accounting Standards Boards, or GASP. This CAFR is designed to provide a thorough and detailed presentation of the city's financial condition. Well, the past many years, we've been presenting to you guys the basic financial statements. This year, we're presenting to you the comprehensive annual financial report. Question is, why CAFR? The CAFR is important because this report contains financial statements prepared in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. This includes three sections, namely the introductory section, financial section, and statistical section. All the sections provide the citizens and taxpayers and legislative and oversight bodies information to evaluate the city's financial health, financial position and economic condition. Terry Queig, a licensed certified public accountant who specializes in governmental audits, has audited the city's, city of Cattati's financial statements and has issued the city of Cattati a clean audit report and that the accompanying financial statements have no significant or unusual transactions in the city's statements of net assets and fund statements. This type of report, which is a clean audit, is issued by the auditor when the financial statements are free of material misstatements and are presented fairly in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles, which in other words means that the city's financial condition, position, and operations are fairly presented in the financial statements. It is the best type of report an auditee may receive from an external auditor. I would also like to share to the council that. I would also like to share to the council that following the acceptance of the city's first-ever comprehensive annual financial report, management plans to submit for the first time to participate in the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Program. This program allows management to earn a certificate and recognition for its preparation of the comprehensive annual financial report. The preparation of this report could not be accomplished without the efficient and dedicated services of the entire staff of the Admin Services Department. I would like to express my special appreciation to Angela Quarter, Neil Thomason, and Angela Scholenthal. I would also like to thank the mayor, city council members, and the city manager, Damien O'Gill, for their support, stewardship, and commitment in planning and conducting the financial affairs, and the long-term fiscal health of the city in a responsible and efficient manner. Thank you very much, and this concludes my presentation for the evening.
And before the council jumps in on this, I just want to add one quick thing. So Norm, Norm did, in my opinion, a great job on putting this together. It's, you know, the city has for years had the basic financial statements, which is what's required of municipal government. And this is the first time that we have the basic financial statement, but wrapped around it is a 10-year statistical section, a 10-year history of financials, as well as a narrative that analyzes a lot of the financial information in there. To try to, you know, again, to try to further a goal we've been hearing, you know, a long time from the council, to try to make this, you know, information that's sort of in the counties is, can be kind of dense and hard to understand for people that don't follow municipal finance. And so this is just another step. You saw the new budget that we adopted earlier this year, which is much more robust and explanatory, you know, and to try to make it clear for people as to what the city's, you know, budget is, what the finances are. This is, you know, the next step in that process, and there's more steps to go and some other things to just make the financial information of the city more generally accessible and understandable for people that aren't accountants. So I just want to say that.
If I may add as well, the budget that we presented to you guys a few months ago was also submitted for award, and it met several requirements for us to be able to submit it for certificate of excellence in budgeting. Same thing that we're doing for this year with the comprehensive annual financial report. Based on my conversation and based on my review, it appears that we have met the many requirements required for us to submit, and I am very proud that we are, the city are trying to little by little achieve excellence in financial reporting and budgeting.
So Norm, how common is this? And how, how about others within our county even?
Well, I'm not so sure about the, I think most of the cities in the county are submitting comprehensive annual financial report, and, but I know one or two are starting to submit as well. I spoke, spoken with one director that was, goal is also to submit one this year. But overall in the United States, because the general, the Government Finance Officers Association is, covers both the United States and Canada, cities with a population of under 10,000, 10,000 people, only about 1% have received award, you know, for excellence in reporting. And it's a, it's a high goal, but I have faith that we are getting there.
Thank you. Any other questions for Norm?
I did. How long has the CAFRA association or process been around?
I'm not exactly sure, but I'm assuming a minimum of 50 years, maybe.
So in 54 years as an incorporated city, this is the first time we've submitted something like that?
Yes.
I think it's, it's great, Norm. I think it looks fantastic. I think the whole department has done a good job, and it's something we can be proud of. Thank you.
No questions. Have a comment later.
Questions? John, do you have any questions?
No, I'd like to just thank the staff for doing this. I enjoyed the additional 200 pages reading, and, but it was, I mean, you know, it is, it's comprehensive, and if we can strive to reach those high goals, that's what we should be doing. So my congratulations to you.
Yeah, I think the narratives really help. You know, you, a lot of times, you know, we get the budget, and you get like just these raw numbers, and yeah, you can look at the raw numbers, but it's nice to get a narrative about what you're trying to accomplish and what you're doing and, and how you're doing it. I think that that, that is helpful to people that don't look at budgets all the time. So anyways, thank you and your staff for taking care of this, and Damian, thank you for being supportive of this moving forward. And with that, I will open up public comment on this. George?
Well, counsel, my understanding of these types of audits, they don't really reflect when you spend money, whether you're wasting money or not. The audits show that you spent the money, where it went. When the income comes in, it shows where the income is coming in from and how it's balancing out, but it doesn't show the real picture when it comes down to when counsel estimates a certain amount of revenue is going to come in from a store like Lowe's or a new hotel, they're just going to take that number and they're going to put it in the mix. We find out later whether the numbers are correct or not. These auditors don't walk around Katati and take a look at the condition of our streets, the conditions of our public buildings. They don't really take into consideration the quality or the condition of our equipment in the Public Works Department. They're dealing with the numbers. They assess values on these things, their life expectancy, and how long a piece of equipment's going to work. And as I understand, for many years, we didn't never did, we never, Katati never did an depreciation schedule on a lot of the equipment in the, in the, that the city owns and operates. The audit does not reflect the fact that we have 21, 22 police officers, whether that's right, that's enough for Katati. It just shows where the money is going, and that's all equaling out. It doesn't show that we paid too much for a police car because we leased it. It just shows that the audits, that the numbers are, are balancing. The real quality of the city is, is, is shown by personal inspection, by counsel, and making a clear, clear goal on how we're going to go forward. Audits don't show that. Those are policy decisions, whether the town is going to be really sustainable in the future, given the fact of what might happen in the marketplace with the internet, with e-commerce, taking in more and more of our dollars, and so forth. There's a lot that these audits don't show. Nothing in the audit that says that, I guess they're, they're assuming that this building is going to be around for another 100 years, and we're going to keep patching it and, and repairing it, and doing $146,000 remodels in a small office, and so forth. The audit just shows where the money is going, whether everything balances out, and a general expectation of where we go forward. So it's, I think the information to you is of limited value.
Thank you for your comments. Lori?
George is right. It's a bunch of figure checking and all that. One thing I've asked, but I would like to say that Norm has put the quality of financial statements and the budget to a whole nother level, and they're much more easier to understand. But I've also asked repeatedly that there's a League of Cities Municipal Health worksheet that compares things like reserves and everything to a standard, and it has like a red light, yellow light, green light system, and that the city, most likely Norm, would do, do this worksheet, and it's never been done. We, we don't know generally the health of the city. It's, I wasn't going to go over the budget after the hotel and the, and all that. I understand a lot of accounting. I started as an accounting major way, way back. But, you know, we, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. But we need to compare ourselves to other cities under 10,000. I've done some comparisons in the past, and like we're way off with like police expenditures and things like that, compared to other cities in California that are 10,000. That's what's also this is missing in these reports, is comparing it to other cities of the same size with the same needs. So I think those are the type of things that we're going. And this is also another issue. I think it could have, last year, we didn't get until like April. This is something that could have waited. I'm, with all the, we didn't need the 600, 200 pages, whatever, of the packet with everything else we had, because nobody could, no one was going to go over it. And then have the measure G for tomorrow. This is just too much, figures and facts to go over and, after Thanksgiving. Okay, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close public comment.
A quick comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I see a lot of value in this, Mr. Veloso. The question about knowing what a budget really shows, if the numbers bear out, having something that goes back 10 years that gives you a guideline on how to look at budgeted versus actual over that period of time, really, if you're ready to do the homework, it should give you a good sense of what's there. So I think that's, I really appreciate it. I mean, just to boil it down, what we're seeing here is a, a new level of even higher professionalism here from your department the last few years, and I, for one, am very pleased and very impressed with it. So I'm going to just say that I congratulate you and your team and your work this year. I'm going to cross my fingers to see if we can get that award of excellence, but if we don't get it this year, I have a feeling it'll be next time, because you seem to show a lot of dedication for that. So, and your interest in that brings a lot of value to everyone in Katati, and I think that's a very good thing. Thank you.
John?
I'm ready to make a motion.
John, did you have comments? Wendy? No? Okay. Well, I would just like to thank you again, and, and, well, it is only a piece of the puzzle, it's a piece of the puzzle. And I, and as Vice Mayor Landman said, you know, it's nice to look in one spot at 10 years, because it does give us a perspective. And I don't disagree with the comment about comparing with other cities. It's just often difficult because everything isn't the same. And a lot of times, you are talking apples and oranges, and that is why when you go to the League of California Cities and you look at some of their things, they say you have to be very careful, because not every city is the same, the way they do things, the way they finance things, the taxes that they have, the taxes that they don't have, you know, they're, it's, it's complicated. So you can't just say that because you're a certain size, you should have a certain thing. You know, for instance, you know, Sebastian's kind of about our size. Well, they actually have a fire department that's part of their city. So it, it gets complicated pretty quickly. Same with Cloverdale. Cloverdale has a fire department, so, and they have taxes that we don't, you know, so it, you kind of, it, when you take that onion, you start peeling it down. When you go to compare, you really have to peel like-for-like comparisons, and those are really the only numbers that you can really compare, is when you have like-for-like things. All the other stuff is just sort of, as you pointed out, the policies and the way that city runs. And each city runs a little bit differently, so, but thank you for that. So I'm done.
I would move that we would adopt, make a motion to receive and file a fiscal year 2016-2017 annual comprehensive, comprehensive annual financial report.
I'd be happy to second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So here we go. We are on item D, which is the Katati Park and Use Special Event Permit Policy, and we have Ashley.
So before Ashley gets going, I just will point out, so the packet has the redlined version, just so kind of, so you can see what changes from the existing policies. And at the dais and the back table, we have the clean version with them, with those changes accepted.
The redlined version was a little difficult.
It's in, yeah, that's the packet one, and it didn't, we didn't put a clean version in there, and we realized as we were looking through it later that it would probably be good to have a clean version handy, in case you wanted to look at something specific.
Just added to our homework.
Right.
I was like, what?
Is this on? Okay, thanks. One other thing that should have been added to there, to the special event policy and park, is that page seven was supposed to be edited. It says first aid with an E, and that should just be removed. So that's something that slipped through as well. But, okay, so, sorry. The City of Katati Park Use Policy was adopted in 2008, with the last known updates in 2012. The, the, that was, and the facility policy was last updated in 2014. Both of those updates were just minor updates with contact information and edit, grammatical edits. The fees have not been changed since they were established, which was nine years ago for one, and I can't even find the original facility policy. So with, with the rec department coming back in 2015, and more use being, more use to the facilities and the parks in our city, more events taking place, more private permits, we've, I've, we've noticed that there's been, it's been time to change, make some changes to the policies and fees associated with those. The proposed facility use and reservation policy and renamed City of Katati Park Use and Special Event Permit, Permit Policy establishes the rules, regulations, procedures, and fees governing the use of said events and parks, as well as public property for special events. That's the same. Most of the stuff in the policy remains the same, but there's a couple notable differences that I just wanted to go over real quick. And this was mostly to streamline the process of renting, especially now that it's just one person doing it, along with all the rec department stuff, other rec department stuff. So there's updated fees with the facility and the parks and fee categories. There are current, prior to this, this draft, there were, I think, eight fee categories, four, and then they were different for weekdays as weekends. So we've eliminated one of those categories, and now it's currently all nonprofit groups, service organization, and governmental agencies, private agent, private businesses, and private events that are Katati residents, and then non-resident private events. So those are the three categories we've gotten rid of, weekend fees versus weekday fees, and out-of-town non, our government agencies. The, we've added special events on public property to the park use policy. This is in regards to events that take place in Katati, but are not, and they're on public property, but they're not in a park only. For instance, the downtown shop and stroll that's this Saturday, the Kotat Teterod, those of those aren't solely in a park. There was no policy for that established, so we've, we've added those so that we can, we've added that category so that we can, we have a way to process that. We updated the category and fees for smaller groups for park use, so that you can have an event, this is mostly for those small birthday parties, family gatherings, that are under 100, under 50 people, more than 20, so they still need a permit, but they're not being categorized as the same group that's up to 100 people or 250 people. Obviously, they have a smaller impact on the park, so they, the fees are indicated there to show that, you know, that they're, they're not going to be impacting the park as much, so they're a smaller group, or smaller fee. And then we've updated the terms and conditions just to kind of go with the times, really. It, some of those updates are regarding cleanup. We've put that you can't drain anything into, you can't dump any trash into the drain so that it doesn't go into the water. Direct cost to the city, so that we can hopefully recover any costs that are out of the park fee, but direct cost, this would be something like the, like the accordion fest staff time, which we already have, they already are doing that. But instead of having to put that in every staff report, it's already included, so we're able to do that. First aid, and noticing the impacted resident. Um, first aid, and noticing the impacted residents and, and, um, businesses when an event is coming up. So, this will allow us to require that people that are having events where there's maybe a street closed and somebody that is gonna be directly impacted, that, that applicant will need to make sure that they're notified prior to the event taking place, so that we're not having to always field all of those calls, or be responsible for letting them know that. The policies were attached, like Damian said, we did add the, um, the clean versions to the back dais and to you. And then, so we have recommended that the City Council adopt a resolution approving the updated City of Cattati Facility Use and Reservation Policy, and the updated City of Cattati Park Use and Special Event Pro- Policy. And I'd be happy to take, any questions?
Questions?
Sure. All three of you are staring at me.
So, before you launch into questions, there's one other thing that I, we were just talking about today that I think would be notable, just to, just to point out, and that's the, for the facility rentals, having an hourly rate rather than daily rate, because now there, these rooms are so busy that we're cycling through people in those rooms multiple times in a day, and having someone pay a full day doesn't make sense in this case.
So, could I just go document by document, just a minor, minor little things? Um, so, on the park use document, on, because I had to now look at the clean version to see the page numbers. On page two, where you have a table of facilities listed by geographic location, Civic Center Park, Putnam Park, specifically those two, was it intentional to leave, for lack of a better word, the Snack Shack building out from both those locations? Because they each have a separate building.
I, I think, um, so in both of those cases, they're sort of operated by Little League, so, I, I, I think for the purposes of the policy, we didn't really wanna point them out.
And that's fine. I, I was just curious why they weren't in there. And, and I know the one over here, um, when we built that, there's, it, it's more sophisticated, you know, it's got a lot of items in there, and it probably doesn't get completely emptied out, whereas I believe the one at Putnam, which is not much of a facility, um, it does get emptied out after each season, so, but if you wanted to make it available, keep, that's fine. I was just curious about that.
Just don't eat the popcorn at the first game at Putnam.
There you go. And the very last page of that document, if I have to see this map one more time, where it arches glass, is down by Dos Amigos, if we could just get an updated map, even, you know, something off Google Map, not the photographs, but may as well just use something, because I see that thing coming in every time, it's like, just drives me nuts. Minor details, I know, but, that's why we're here. And then the only minor comment on the other document, Facility and Reservation Policy and Application, page six of 10, uh, under deposits, in bold, it has the clean fee of $125. There's just an extra decimal and two extra zeros there. May as well just clean that up while you're, I was gonna tell you about the E and A, first aid, too, but I, I don't have to, thank you. Other than that, I will say, in this pressure-filled environment that you're in tonight, Ashley, you did a fine job with these documents.
Wendy, questions? No? John Moore, did you have a question? Okay, okay.
I'll just do my comment.
I, I had a question on the, um, on the draft copy, but it looks like it's been cleaned up on that clean copy, so, you're good.
There you go.
Yeah, just a cou- couple of quick comments. First of all, I'm gonna just say I really appreciate the focus and energy you've been bringing to facilities, recreation, that's pretty obvious to all of us, so thank you for that. I really like a few things, the simplified categories, that's helpful to the public, and it's just logical, the reductions for the smaller sizes, uh, the cycling throughout the day, very logical, too, and glad to see we're seeing more throughput, that's a good sign. Uh, and particularly the hourly rate, that just makes a lot of sense for me, and I wanted to mention the Snack Shack, since you brought it up. I do remember that the Little League contract, they're responsible for upkeep and maintenance of ground, so that's probably why it's set aside somewhat different. But the only reason I brought it up is because I just wanted to remind the sign, and I believe that falls under their contract, so when they get around to it, that would be a good thing to update, it's ready. So, thank you for the heads up, and that gave me a shot to put in something for that sign one more time.
Okay, that's it?
That's it, thank you.
Okay. Then I will open this up for public comment.
Thank you. I have a question about the updated, uh, policy. Is there anything in the policy is, uh, that addresses that, uh, people will mount monuments and dedication monuments in the middle of a park without any permits, without any public hearings, without going before Design Review Board? Do we have anything in the policy that, 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 that addresses the prohibition of just anybody coming in, whether it's a group, and setting down a monument or memorial? Because I find this really disturbing. Uh, we have parks here that are public parks, and when you set down monuments without a public hearing, without anything on the, on the, on any city agenda, and take it upon yourself to hijack a park, but to place monuments, it's wrong. And we need to update the policy to say, you got, you know, the city has to go through a proper procedure. They don't own the parks. And we have Athena down here in the middle of the town as well, and that was supposed to be a temporary, uh, um, statue down there. Andre Moro and his associate from Sonoma State, uh, University came here for the city and made a presentation how they were going to place that statue down there temporarily, and that we would get new statutes, statues, and new artwork every so often. If you remember his presentation, well, there's been no other statues or artwork down there at that park to replace it. So, now it's permanent. It was supposed to be temporary. The policy should reflect, what in the heck that we're doing about these statues? We also have the statue of Jim Boggio at La Plaza Park, that is, and, and the statue's often decorated in sometimes humorous and sometimes, um, uh, offensive decorations that the city is not addressing. We should have some policy about how long we're gonna let Jim Boggio's statue be, uh, disgraced by some of the things I've seen hanging on that statue. Um, we make police reports, and nothing happens. Um, about the park, what are we, what are we doing about the fountain in the park? Fountain that was supposed to be turned on, we'll put water in there, uh, and we don't know what's going on with that as far as a policy, and how we're going to manage that fountain at La Plaza Park. So, there's, I wa- I'd like to see some action on, on, on policy on some of these things.
Thank you. Lori?
One thing I was gonna bring up is, there doesn't seem to be any notice or anything that you have to reserve park facilities for groups of 20 or more. Um, I know, when I worked for City of Santa Rosa Rec and Parks, like Finley Park had signs up saying, you know, this group, and you need a permit. I haven't seen any kind of permit, any kind of signs or, so people probably are doing it and not, they probably needed a permit and they didn't know. Um, the other thing, and this is sort of more of a question, is, um, when my mom, I wa- I was gonna have in the Ray Miller Community Center, my mom's 80th birthday party in April, until you guys decided to put a shopping case, shopping cart race through it. But, the insurance for the event was more than the room was. It was like twice as much, and I, later talking, it was that I heard that we didn't need to have, it was like double-dipping insurance, but it's city policy, you have to have the insurance. Um, so I'm not sure why we have to have very expensive private insurance, and that's one of the reasons, other than the shopping cart race. We went to a restaurant with our 35 people, um, because we were paying such hot, we would have to pay for a four-hour event, it was something like $200, when the room rate was like 100 for two rooms. So, I'm not sure why it's so much to just rent a room, a couple rooms, for a few hours, it was, oh, cost per hooted, and that's, seems like something that needs to be addressed, that, um, their, their low costs, I mean, I had the Cattati resident, um, one, you know, no alcohol or whatever, there was a lot of, um, things that, I had the basic rate, and it was still too cost per hooted. So, I just think the policy needs to look, be looked into. Thank you. Oh, and Ashley is one of the hardest workers I've ever seen.
Anyone else wishing to comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Um, so, this is about the fees and uses, not about things in the park. So, that's like a different section, maybe that's something we can look at at a different time, it's not really related, right?
Yeah, tonight we're talking about rental and use. We're not talking about monuments or other things like that.
Okay. But, um, okay, so, will you kind of figure out where that fits somewhere? Because it probably does fit somewhere, we probably, do we have a policy on that? Do you know? I don't remember.
I, you know, I'd, I'd, I'd have to get back.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, and, so, this might be, um, City Attorney, why we require insurance?
Well, I'm speculating a little bit here, but I am, I'm assuming that these are the limits that were approved or requested by REMIF, the insurance pool, and, um, it's the standard amount. I've looked at a lot of different, um, city use policies, and some are, actually require more insurance than this, even for a couple-hour event. So, um, you know, it, it's something that could be discussed with REMIF, but, um, basically, we're required to make sure that we have enough coverage in the event of a serious accident or injury, uh, when one can expect that everybody gets sued when that happens, including the city, and city does need to protect its resources, so, um, maybe that's something that'd be followed up on with REMIF, but I'm sure that's where the requirement came from.
It, it is absolutely a REMIF requirement, and there's, I, there's different levels of insurance. I mean, if you're doing like, you know, knife juggling or chainsaw juggling, your policy limits might be a little different, but, you know, generally speaking, these are standard requirements from REMIF.
And I'm looking at this insurance page, and we also give, um, some places that apparently will sell this for us, the one-day event insurance.
Yeah, and, um, obviously, we don't set the fees for the insurance company. Um, what I've been told from multiple renters is that going through a current policy, like a homeowner's insurance, if you own your home, or maybe even a renter's insurance or automobile insurance, the rates are lo- much lower than going out for a special event insurance, just off of the internet. These are just some rec, some that we know exist, but the fees I've heard are as low as $35, and then, you know, up to the couple hundred dollar amount, all for the same coverage.
And the question about, um, having a sign, um, is that common policy? Should?
We have some, so, um, I know for a fact that there's a, a post already at Putnam Park that says permit required. It may not say for groups over 20, so, I'm, I mean, we can certainly look at that.
I, it's a good idea, so, because some people, some people don't know, and I've gone by on the weekend and seen, you know, jumpy houses that nobody seems to know about, so...
We, um, but I know that there's some out there, they may not be in all the parks, so we can look into that.
I agree that that's a good suggestion, that we probably should look at doing. So...
Rogue jump houses.
Rogue jump houses, yes.
With that, I, if everybody's got a chance.
Did John have a?
Did you get a chance?
No, I just think, you know...
You were looking this way, I thought we were.
Well, I was, and I, and then I couldn't tell if he wanted to say something.
No, I just, uh, you know, you put signs up in the parks and they're completely ignored. I mean, we've had signs in La Plaza for years that says no dogs. Yeah, every day you go by, there's freaking dogs in there, and especially at events. So, so, and when you think about signs, maybe something that would be, you know, please contact the city if you're planning an event or something, that, they might read that versus a whole menu of do's and don'ts, primarily don'ts.
The sign would be way too big.
Right, just, yeah, contact the city before you plan an event here, or something along that line.
Keep it simple.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was it.
Okay.
I think I might be that time now, then, maybe? I'm watching, I'm seeing nods, very good. I'd like to move a resolution approving the updated City of Cattati Facility Use and Reservation Policy, and the updated City of Cattati Park Use and Special Event Permit Policy.
Second?
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
That's your 5-0 vote?
Madam Mayor, may I also make a motion that it's, since it's 10:05, to continue our meeting, we have one item left on our regular agenda. I'd like to make a motion to continue the meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's get to that. So, we are now at, if I can find it...
Yeah, I can see it. 12. Public hearings.
12A, urgency, okay. Tell me I knew what page that would be.
25 on the back.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Do we have a staff report? 25, Mark Smith.
We do, yeah.
Yes. See, it wasn't just me.
Everything's out of order now. Um, all right, so, uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is, um, this item, this public hearing is an ex, a consideration of an extension of an urgency ordinance for cultivation of, uh, non-medical marijuana. So, this, um, as you recall, back in, uh, December, I believe it was, the council initially adopted this urgency ordinance shortly after the voters approved Prop 64, um, just to hold things as they were until we went through this, um, discussion of permanent regulations around cannabis. Um, that initial 45-day inter-emergency ordinance was subsequently extended, and I believe it was January of this year, and that's a 10-month, 15-day extension. And so, that's what we're in right now. That extension will expire, um, December 8th, so we're almost upon it, it's gonna be before our next council meeting. So, it was, um, it was timely to consider another extension. This, this would be the third and final extension that's allowed under, uh, the government code, and this would be an up-to-one-year extension, which I don't expect will be anything close to that, but, um, it just holds, um, it holds the sort of existing ban on outdoor cultivation in place, like it has been for the last year, until we get the permanent regulations adopted in, um, January, February of next year, and then they would supersede this and it would go away. Um, and as you recall, this is, it's, it's, it's a, basically a ban on outdoor cultivation, and it puts, um, limitations on how indoor cultivation can occur for non-medical cannabis. And, um, uh, we've already seen this twice before, so, I think for the sake of brevity, I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions, feel free to, of course, ask me, but that's it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
John?
So, um, it's a one-year extension for an issue that we think is gonna be addressed within three months?
Yeah, I believe so.
So, why are we going here?
It's just the standard, as I understand it, and maybe Robin can confirm this, but I think when you do it, it's just a standard year. I don't think you can choose how long.
That's right. The government code refers to a one-year extension, if you have your permanent regulations in place in three months, then you'll just rescind the current extension ordinance. That's typically how it's done. You won't have two ordinances going on the books.
Why not? Why, why not just do it for a year?
Why?
John, it's just easier to do it that way. I mean, listen, I, we, we all realize that it's probably not gonna take that long because of the laws that are coming into play in January.
Right.
I'm not even gonna address it anymore, I mean, I think it's a standard and silly.
My concern from a legal point of view is that the government code very clearly says it's 45 days, it's 10 months and 15 days, it's one year, it doesn't have what you often see, up to one year, up to 45 days, so... So it's a kind of a technicality, but I would go with the legislative language, which is a year. And then again, the minute you don't need it, you just get rid of it.
So that's a much better explanation because if it's based on the government code and that's what they indicate, then that explains why it goes a year when it's really something that doesn't need to be a year. So, thank you. That was my only question.
Mark, did you have any questions?
No, no questions.
John, Wendy?
No.
I'll open this up for public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment. So, would you like to do with this one?
I'll move to adopt a one-year extension to the interim urgency ordinance prohibiting outdoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana and providing conditions for the indoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana.
I'll second. A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
I will vote on that with an explanation on my vote, if I may. I think that the emergency ordinance is a little drastic, but I know that we're going to be addressing it in a few months. So with that in mind, I will support it for a short period of time.
Okay, so is that a yes?
Yes, it is.
Okay, with comment. Let that show a 5-0 vote with comment. Okay, so where am I now? So we didn't do that. We have to jump over that. I'm up to 14, I think, city manager's report. Does that sound about right?
Sounds about right. Yes, thank you. All right, so some general updates, first of all. As you recall, the city council saw an agreement earlier, a couple of months ago, about taking over landscape maintenance at the Vets Hall. So we have the park around it, but the area immediately around the building itself is owned by the county and they currently have a landscape contractor that they send around the county and it's not really cost-effective for them. So earlier in this year, the council had authorized the city to basically use our own landscape contractor to, when they're mowing the park, just to go a few feet further and do the Vets Hall, which is much more cost-effective and the county would reimburse us for all the cost of doing that. And that's starting in December, so that's about to happen. And the holiday toy drive is upon us once again. This is a partnership between the City of Cattati, Rancho Adobe Fire District, and the Rotary Club of Ronert Park, Cattati. And unwrapped toys can be delivered to the city police station, city hall, or Rancho Adobe Fire Department here in Cattati. And applications for families to receive toys are available at the police and fire departments. The deadline to submit your application is Wednesday, December 13th. Toy wrapping will occur on Saturday, December 16th, and then Santa Claus will be transported by police cars and fire trucks to deliver the toys on Saturday, December 23rd. I think Santa rides in the front. I don't think he's in the back, but anyway, I've never asked. Right. And then, as was discussed earlier, Measure G oversight is tomorrow night at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers for anyone that's so inclined or interested. Construction updates, the office remodel gets underway this coming Monday and it will go through January. And just a reminder that the temporary offices are across the parking lot in the community center. The nearest side, the side facing the Cattati Room, so that side of the community center, there's two classrooms there that are currently housing engineering and community development and building. And there's directional signs you probably saw around city hall when you came in tonight and a posting on the website and so forth. So that is starting up here shortly. And then on the recreation front, the mayor earlier tonight already announced the tree lighting, the shop and stroll downtown, breakfast with Santa, and drop-in shop, where you drop your kids and go shopping for the day. But here, I should say, you leave your kids at the childcare.
I'm sorry, it just doesn't sound right.
I know, it sounds like a CPS kind of thing, but no, it's, you put your kids at the childcare and then you go, yeah. And then last week, we held Camp Cattati Thanksgiving Break Camp and we had 16 children there at that camp. And they got to spend the week making crafts, playing outside when it wasn't raining and meeting new friends. And then during the two-week break over Christmas, so this is December 26th through January 5th, we're hosting the Camp Cattati Winter Break Camps. And this is another great way for kids to spend time off school while parents still have to work or recover from the holidays. Drop-ins are welcome, but pre-registration is always encouraged so that we can make sure that, you know, we have spaces for everyone. And then in addition to the annual toy drive I mentioned, we're also partnering with Redwood Empire Food Bank. And you probably saw the food barrels inside here in city hall, but there's also one at the police station. And we're also going to have them at the holiday tree lighting event for people that have food to donate. Redwood Empire Food Bank picks them up. And then a new session of ballet classes will begin on December 5th for boys and girls ages three and up. And our Star Kids Production Program will be performing their Winter Sisters. This is the not-frozen musical this weekend in the Cattati Room. So children from the show and shows past will also be performing holiday music at this tree, the tree lighting this Friday. And so like always, to register for these classes or for more information, you can visit the city website or call Ashley at 665-4222 or awilson@catatacity.org. Thank you very much.
Okay, question?
One quick question.
About the drop-in?
Winter Sisters, is there a Tiger Emperor show coming anytime soon?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Suddenly, we're concerned about Disney coming down on us. I'm not sure, but.
I would never mess with their attorneys, but we'll just see what happens. Robin, you might be busy. Thank you, Mr. Robin.
Okay, no more questions, right? Okay, we will move on to city council member reports. Do you start this way? No?
You don't report this meeting, Madam Mayor?
Wow. Wow, okay. So I was on the climate mayor's call and that was very interesting. There ended up being 69 cities on the call. So it was a kind of an interesting dynamic there. Basically, there was some legislature that was discussed and some discussions from the meetings in Paris and how they were excluded from the main meeting, but people got together and it was pretty interesting. I also went to the Waste Management Agency meeting and the biggest thing at the Waste Management Agency meeting was the, also the assignment for the Waste Management Agency to recology for their, for their piece of the pie. And lastly, I was at the makeup meeting because of the fires for the groundwater basin. The biggest thing there is that we will be contracting with a company to look at fee analysis and rate setting. We got a really good overview. They're doing pieces of overview of the basin, you know, kind of sections. And one of the high points that was, that was brought out, people have leapt and assumed that, you know, we're going to charge fees and all these private well owners are going to have to pay these fees and all that. And that's not necessarily the case. One of the examples that they showed was back, and I forget when the dates were, when Ronert Park, before they were using water agency water and they were bringing down the water table when they kind of adjusted their behavior and people started being monitored, you know, monitored, if you will. Kind of, they knew what they were using and the behavior changed. Well, guess what? The aqua floor got better. And so we replenished all that water. So that, it might not be the sky is falling, sky is falling. You know, we can change some of it just by our behaviors. It's not necessarily this, you know, thing where we necessarily are going to have to charge people. But I thought that was an interesting discussion that we had on that and I thought that I'd bring it back because I think people have to hear that. It's not that, my goodness, you know, we're just going to put a fee on anybody that has a well. That might not necessarily have to happen. Maybe they'll have to monitor, but then you kind of know, you know, what it is you're using and can change, change, change what you're doing a little bit. But that's all I have to report. So with that, we'll move on to public comment on non-action agenda items. George?
At times during this part of the council meeting, I will comment on a non-agenda item, which would be the city manager's report. I don't have anything to comment on tonight's city manager's report. But I would like to comment on requesting that you consider a future agenda item. And that would be over the fact that I really feel tonight, you put the cart before the horse with this hotel idea. And going forward for future agenda items, because this is already, you know, it's already been proposed tonight in the fashion that you did propose it, and I respect that. But going forward for a future agenda item, I'd like to see you come up with some kind of policy that says when you buy or come across these, this public property, these proper properties through sale or by donation, whether it be Faletti Park or Park and Ride, that you consider it to be not your property, but the people's property, the people of Cattati's property. Now, this may be a concept that's really difficult to comprehend, but I want you to think of city property as the people's property. And when you go forward with anything, that you be completely transparent and include the public before you ever send out any RFPs. And as the realtor said here tonight so eloquently, there was a lack of transparency here, and she did not use these words, but I will. I think it stinks. It's not in the character of Cattati. It's not in the character, I believe, of the people who are leading this town. I don't know how this happened, but going forward, I think you need to put on the agenda that when you come across property like this, you stop. And you think about holding a workshop and you think about bringing the public in to help you decide where these RFPs are going to go out to. And I think that would be a fantastic thing for the city council to achieve because this whole thing has gone awry. And you're going to hear more about this from other people, members of the public going forward, about the stench of railrodding and ram-rodding a hotel project in the fashion that we're seeing it tonight. The size of that contract over there, which you're going to start to discuss, is completely untimely, unprofessional, and not in the spirit of public properties.
Thank you for that. Lori?
Mine are on future agenda items. As usual, I want to bring up weed abatement and also the tree maintenance. We just had this huge firestorm. If it happened to Cattati, we would be unprepared. We don't even have a, you guys don't follow the city code on the, on weed abatement. And the tree over, like West School Street is, would be, it would be horrible. There's canopy things, so, sorry, I'm really tired. So these are issues, preventive issues that need to be addressed at some time. You've been stalling and stalling, stalling, and you've left it open for a huge disaster. Environmental things are not, seem to be important to you. I mean, you've got Village Walk next to a gas station, you know, a high-density. You know, there was, there's a lot of things that have happened and you guys need to have environmental policies on your agendas of what you will, like how you, the SECA, CECL, whatever, you know, how you. You always say in the reports that there'll be less than significant impact, but that's not always true. A gas station next to high-density was not at less than significant, could not be mitigated. And you, but of course, in the report's going to say that. You guys need to have, have an agenda item that deals with this issue of making sure that the environmental concerns are completely dealt with and not, and not 10 years old or 15 years old and things like that. So I'm really tired, so I'm going to stop. Thanks.
Thank you. Eric?
I wanted to follow up to some degree what I interpreted the mayor's report to talk about with water usage. Ronert Park, four years having two-inch lines with no monitoring and then changing their pattern. A number of years ago, when Mr. Deloso first came onto the council, people talked about zaroscape. That was, it was being talked about in the 80s. He came on in the 90s. And it took until last five years or so before we started making some changes in city parks and some formula changes for people's gardens outside of their businesses and that sort of thing. I've come before the council asking for water catchment, which used to be illegal in the county. Now it's well-received. There are schools that simply take a 250-gallon tank and put it under rain spout. If every time it rains, you get 250 gallons, that pretty much covers your water usage for a week of gardening and that sort of thing. This was a school. You could certainly do it here. You have a Leeds building that was built to be totally conservation-oriented and totally together. But we tend to react after the fact. When we're in the fifth year of drought, we then start thinking about water usage. Other countries have used water recycling their entire existence. New Zealand, Australia, Hawaii, most of their water, all of Lanai's water comes from rainfall. All of it. They have no source of water in Lanai. They don't bring it in tankers. So water catchment can be used. And it certainly wouldn't hurt if all the water was being recycled and otherwise used in landscaping here. When you're going to have the landscaper going out there 18 feet of cutting grass, you might also do the same thing for water use. Capping a little bit on another input on trees, there have been people talking about the eucalyptus trees across the street. I've talked to you about pine trees that are notably sick and dying in the county. In San Francisco, a woman was paralyzed because a tree fell on her in a park. So it's one thing to say, oh, it's not really an issue. Well, if you're that person's family member or that person, it will become an issue. And in terms of liability, it would become an issue because if somebody were to be killed or injured because of essentially not bothering to deal with it, it becomes an issue. So you might want to start not ignoring such things. Trees die and trees fall down and most of you should be aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll bring that back.
Mayor, just one more thing I thought would be helpful. And I apologize that I had forgotten this earlier in our earlier discussions. On the, you know, in addition to all this, all the years of discussion about this property, the property at 147 St. Joseph's being a hotel site. In June, June 13th, to be precise, the June 13th council meeting, we brought this raft RFP to the council and had a public discussion about it. And many, most of the people in this room had talked about, talked on that item. So it's not, I mean, it was a very long, deliberate process to get to tonight. Just, I mean, I think you knew that already, but I would just point that out.
Okay, so information received after the agenda was posted. We have it up here. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 10:29. So you're going Friday?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, it's that name.